And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see everyone here. So we scheduled this meeting because we still had more work to do on the charter. Before I opened it up to allow the board to do its work, I know there was a lot of conversation during the meeting last week, and there was a lot of public comment. And I thought I would give the opportunity to any Charter Revision Commission members who might want to share comments or say anything they might want to say regarding the process or anything else for that matter, prior to us opening up the meeting. So I wanted to just give that opportunity to members. So if there's anyone who would like to share any comments.
You can come up there?
You can.
Excuse me.
Thank you Pamela. Do I have to hold it down? No. Okay, good. Pamela Iacono, member of the commission. And this afternoon, or early, late this morning, I sent a fairly long memo addressed to all of you. Selectman Flynn last week had asked us the question when he first, when you all were first hearing from us. He wanted an explanation as to why we were moving from 40 to 30. And it's a great question. And when you all heard public comment last night, there were several members of the public that said that we really did not address that, or we didn't prove our point, or they didn't feel that that question had been answered. So I took the time to really spend several days doing the research and documenting it. Things that we heard that aren't new, that were made available to us. And it's hard to follow the bouncing ball. I get it. There's a lot of, a lot of meetings that we held. And anyway, I put something together. I won't read the whole thing because it's six pages long, but you guys all read it. I sent it in for the record so that it can be printed online for the benefit of the public. They can have an opportunity to read what I have to say here as well. And again, and I put this together. It was not on behalf of the commission. It was my reasoning for how I drew the conclusion that I drew. You know, portions of what I'm going to read are a little bit wrong, long, but bear with me. I promise I won't go word for word through this whole thing. It'll just seem like that way initially. But I based my commentary mainly on the Model City Charter. And I just want to open with a few comments about that. The National Civic League was founded as the National Municipal League following a gathering of civic leaders in 1894. This respected group of 100 community leaders included Teddy Roosevelt, Louis Brandeis, and Frederick Law Olmsted. They came together to address incompetency, inefficiency, patronage, and corruption in local governments. Local civic leaders needed inspiration and new models for governing and managing the nation's cities. The Model City Charter is used by hundreds of cities to guide their charter language and governance structure. The newly released ninth edition continues the National Civic League's tradition of recommending the council-manager form of government. The recommended governance changes that are now before the board are really an honest work product derived from consensus building amongst the committee members. We've maintained our traditional form of government, but we have begun the discussion and laid minor groundwork to encourage rethinking our future form of government as the town continues to evolve. I'd like to state for the record that none of these changes were about anyone individually. Personally, I did not get what I had hoped for, and that was a town council legislative body instead of an RTM. And that's okay. I don't think any one of us on the commission signed on to this for personal gain. I do believe every single one of us was working in the best interest of the town. And it makes me sad that such an important document was really politicized by just a vocal few. The commission's civility addition to the charter serves as a good reminder that we are all neighbors, and the best solutions come from honest and respectful dialogue. And we got a lot of honest and respectful dialogue, too. Our last charter revision was in 2006. It was long overdue for review. And in that time, a lot has happened in town, especially from a technology and media standpoint. Those two items alone made our charter outdated. Under the previous administration, we spent close to $100,000 formulating a strategic plan for the town. This effort produced a tremendous amount of documented public feedback that deserves consideration. The stakeholders in those discussions were electors of the town of Fairfield, and we were right to acknowledge their voices and examine their feedback as it relates to the charter. There were two areas that emerged from the strategic plan public sessions that relate to the charter, and those concepts were one of the reasons why the charter was opened. The first concept was town government, governance and administration, and the second was sound fiscal management. Regarding town governance, there was discussion about transition from a selectman RTM structure to a town council town manager or town council, town council mayor, realigning and improving the management execution of all town departments, and leveraging technology for improved and more cost-effective service delivery. I go on in this memo to talk about the fiscal stewardship, but I'm not going to use my time to go through all of that. So in terms of the transition, I want to answer the question, why? Why are we doing this? Now, while we didn't recommend moving to that type of structure, you want to know why we want to go to a smaller RTM. And that's to create a more accountable and responsive government, and to be practical and efficient. And where am I getting that from? I'm not making that up. It's a recommendation based on the principles of the Model City Charter that has been in existence since 1884, and it's the publication of the National Civic League, as I mentioned earlier. The Model City Charter is the product of more than 100 years of interaction of thought leaders on urban governance, practitioners in city government, and scholars who's conduct and research on local, who do research on local government. In the early additions, the thought leaders guided the others how government should be organized. In later additions to now, they work to refine recommendations about the ideal features of city government in order to achieve the highest level of government performance. The new model continues to advocate professional, nonpartisan city governments with mayors and legislative bodies that work together with a manager to run city departments. The influence of the Model City Charter, direct and indirect, can be measured in the ever-increasing use of the form of government it advocates. When it was proposed that the National Municipal League endorse a council-manager plan as its model form, fewer than 50 cities had adopted the plan. By 2002, that number exceeded 3,000. Hundreds more communities operate with essential features of the plan, particularly the provision responsible, particularly the provision of responsible professional management. It has always been quite clear that the model is not absolute. It must be tailored to fit local circumstances, traditions, and legal restraints. And its features may be used to strengthen governments, even though those that do not follow the basic council form of government. Again, we took this model and we molded it for our own, just as it suggests, pull the pieces that work for you. The CRC discussed town council town manager, and we ultimately decided that it was too much change for Fairfield. And that plays into tradition, which the city model talks about. And tradition is a big deal in Fairfield. Basically, what came out of this was two-thirds of municipalities in the United States are using a council form of government. We are one of two municipalities in all of the state of Connecticut that's operating in a town of our size using a board of selectmen and an RTM. So ultimately, through a series of discussions, we decided to keep this board of selectmen and RTM structure, and it was a product of a compromise. And the Model City Charter doesn't say what size your council should be. But I think if I leave you with one thing today on the reasoning, and I have six quick things of why, I think this is the most important thing, and it's a documented research. However, smaller city councils are more effective instruments for the development of programs and conduct of municipal business than large local legislative bodies. In the United States, it has been an exceptional situation when a large municipal council, broken into many committees handling specific subjects, has been able to discharge its responsibilities promptly and effectively. In large councils, members usually represent relatively small districts, with the frequent result that parochialism and log-rolling, bargaining for and exchanging votes on a quid pro quo basis distract from the problems of the whole city. Lowering the number of representatives on the RTM will therefore allow membership to discharge their responsibility more promptly and effectively, and help avoid the parochialism and log-rolling. And I think that's the biggest takeaway on all of that. You've heard other things. You've heard us talk about, you know, people don't know who their RTM reps are. And they don't. They don't know that they have 40 RTM reps. They don't know that we have 10 districts. They don't know that the four representatives times 10 districts got them their 40 representatives. We have technology now that allows us to handle constituent services in ways that I couldn't even do seven years ago when I first joined the RTM. You know, you needed to call your RTM rep to get help with a brick is missing on a bridge. Well, you can fill out a constituent services form on the town website now. Yes, I could help be a resource for that. But all of these things are available and at people's fingertips that weren't available, like I said, even seven years ago when I joined the RTM. And they, when I say that people don't know who their RTM reps are, they know the ones that are vocal. They know the ones that are involved. They know the one voice who speaks a lot, the one that picks up a phone call. And they rarely know all four of them in their district. We're going to give you three. They're still going to have three people they can go to, when really, it's mainly one person in that group that's doing the work. And as an example, we just had an RTM meeting. We had 14 items on the agenda. Eight people spoke. Eight out of 40. And that's typical. That's not an exception. That's generally typical. So, you know, that's an anecdotal thing, but honestly, we all hear it all over town. You know, finally, I wanted to just touch a little bit about the chief administrative officer position that's in there. There was a desire by the commission to codify in the charter a chief administrative officer, or what we called a town administrator, who will assist in providing professional management for the town. The Model City Charter says this on recommending a CAO. Among the mayor city councils, among the mayor council cities with a population of 10,000 or higher, 52% have a CAO. In 11% of these cities, the mayor appoints the CAO. Well, again, I just want to emphasize that we didn't go with a mayor council form of government. There was a desire to add professional management, and our addition is an example of tailoring another best practice to fit our needs. Based on the testimony from area officials, a professional manager will be reluctant to work with a large-sized council, which is understandable if you think about it. Who wants to have 40 bosses? And while this charter doesn't call for an administrator to report to the legislative body, it's not a leap of faith to draw the conclusion that a smaller RTM affords the opportunity to have a more meaningful relationship collectively with management. And opening up that dialogue, in my opinion, is a good thing. We have one representative in the United States' fourth congressional district, Jim Himes. When we don't like something in Washington, we know who to call. We know who is accountable. Here, we have spread out that accountability, and we dilute it with such a large membership per district. We have three members of the Board of Selectmen, a nine-member Board of Finance, a nine-member Board of Ed, seven-member TPC, and ZBA, five-member Board of Assessment Appeals, and literally hundreds of citizens serving on elected and appointed boards and commissions, most of which are nine and seven-member bodies. The claim that a smaller RTM is undemocratic simply has no merit. That philosophy conflicts with the Model City Charter, the desire for professional management, the anecdotal experience. And when you consider all the other boards and commissions that the town has, we have a true representative government, an extremely large bifurcated one at that. I don't think we can lose sight of that. So finally, I'll just leave you with this. What we're looking to achieve at the legislative level is better accountability that will lead to better government, as we look to be, as the Model City Charter says, practical and efficient. And according to the National League of Cities, 55% of U.S. municipalities have a council management government, 34% have a mayor council, and only 1% of municipalities have a representative town meeting, and almost all are exclusive to New England. Current trends demonstrate municipalities are moving to a blend of mayor council CAO. If in the future the town determines to move in the direction of two-thirds of the municipalities in our country, this small change is the start of getting there as the body inches closer to a size that can function in that capacity. A reduction in the size of the RTM is forward-thinking, and it meets the best needs of a municipality of our size. And I'll just leave you all with that. There's more in there that has to do with some of the other sections of the charter, but I think that those were the most important things that I wanted to get on the record this afternoon. So thank you for your time on that.
Does anybody on the board have any comments or any questions for? Jerry wants to use an microphone. Sorry, Jerry.
That's okay.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Commissioner Iacono? Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, no.
You have to press that button, Tom.
Have to keep it?
No, just one time.
There you go. It's been so long since it's been in person. It's good to see everybody. First of all, all I wanted to do was say thank you for putting together the document. I appreciate it. Mr. Winn also put together a document that he forwarded. We just got it today, so I haven't had the opportunity to really digest it. I think I got it two or three hours before this meeting. But I greatly appreciate the time and effort that went through, and would encourage any of the other Charter Commission members who had similar feelings to write accordingly on this subject. I think it's worthy of the debate and the discussion. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
And if I may, I'll echo. I really do appreciate you've given me personally a lot to think about. And I want to emphasize that I think ultimately, if there's agreement or disagreement, it may come down to philosophy. But you have given me some interesting points of view. I think we have to move away from, when we don't agree, from name-calling and really get at what it is that we're talking about and debating. And so I appreciate some of the language that you've given us here. But I did just also, I'm hearing it for the first time. I did read comments from Mr. Winn at the gas station on the way over, so very briefly. So I can't even comment on those, but want to echo what my colleague, Mr. Flynn, has just said, that anyone else that wants to offer personal insight, it is helpful when weighing these big decisions. And again, it may come down to a difference in philosophy, but you have certainly given me something to think about, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members?
John Winn, CRC Commissioner, two members of the board. I wanted the opportunity to speak and give you a perspective on the CRC deliberations and decisions from my viewpoint on the topic of a streamlined RTM. I've provided my comments with supplemental details to the board already. In the interest of time, I've summarized some things for oral comment right now. Some have indicated that the intent was to strip residents of representation. That could not be further from the truth. The objective was to provide stronger representation by an improved and more engaged RTM. A foundation for this idea of a realigned RTM was from the extensive work done as part of the strategic planning process. The SPC was a nonpartisan group of four Democrats, four Republicans, and three unaffiliated members, were appointed by the prior Tetro administration, were asked to lend our knowledge and expertise for the benefit of the entire town. No question of political intent was noted during the course of that work or the delivery of our report. It is disheartening to see the way the objectivity of the SPC, and thereby the CRC, has been impugned by some by making false claims against individuals or questioning the objectivity of anyone's work. After significant work, a key SPC recommendation was to reexamine how the town governs and manages itself. This recommendation was derived from the confidential interviews of elected officials and town department heads, town-wide resident workshops, extensive data gathering and analysis, academic expertise, and subject matter expert panels, and consultation with the consultants that we had engaged. The governance change related to both management structure and the legislative function. Feedback during the SPC work was that the RTM was not well-understood nor well-functioning based upon the feedback that we were provided. I firmly believe that it is a well-founded conclusion as part of this work, and when requested to serve on the CRC, I believe that deserved further consideration and exploration. The CRC performed its own additional work to examine the idea of modifying our governance structure to another alternative, such as the town manager council or mayor council. We did a lot of work on that topic that has been previously shared, so I won't go through it again. However, that change was deemed to be too big of a change to fully implement right now. We could have stopped there and done nothing and just left everything unchanged, but that would have been the easy way out, and would have been a disservice to the town. We accepted the feedback that the improvements are needed in the RTM. Some changes can be addressed in the charter, and others can be implemented through their processes and procedures. We debated the RTM changes extensively. Some wanted to significantly reduce the size of the RTM down to 20 members. Some suggested more modest changes. Almost no one suggested leaving the RTM alone, in the belief that it is well-functioning. No one suggested that. As a result of the debate and exploration on the size and structure of the RTM, we accepted the proposal of one of our CRC Commissioners, Mr. Matola, to set the RTM at 30 members. We also retained the 10-district structure. Many views on the benefits of a streamlined RTM were shared, and I believe the work that we conducted indicated that it can improve the accountability of the RTM in helping to manage the town. A more streamlined legislative function would continue to position the town to implement further management and improved management discipline. It could also lessen the proclivity of some to avoid active participation and simply vote with their party, or as could be described as just hiding in the crowd when serving as an RTM member. It's interesting, side note, is the view that in moving from 40 to 30 members will cause a significant hardship in our ability to lead and represent RTM constituents. It didn't seem to happen when we went from 50 to 40. In fact, there wasn't much talk of dissatisfaction after that transition. I believe the same would be true with this change. I hope you will favorably consider the suggested change to adjust the RTM to 30 members. And as I mentioned, I provided a lengthier discussion of this topic with some supplemental details to each of you earlier today.
Thank you, John. Does the board have any follow-up questions for Mr. Winn, Commissioner Winn?
Sure. My name is... I want to echo the thanks that I had shared with Commissioner Iacono to say thank you, Mr. Winn, for your comments and for taking the time. It's clear that this, as, in addition to your work on the Strategic Planning Committee, you care deeply and are in it because of that. And so I wanted to address some of the comments you made that we talked about a little bit privately, but I do want to share them publicly, because I was one of the early, I was someone who had expressed my concern about your role as a former member of the Strategic Planning Committee and how it might impact your work on this commission. To me, it was really a question of implicit, or bias, implicit or otherwise, or a perception of that bias. The strategic plan, we hadn't had a chance to engage as a broader community, and I was concerned that some of the point of view and some of the work that you brought to the table, having done that work, was going to be a challenge, and a perception of a challenge, possibly. And so for me, it was like, why out of the gate start with that? And so that was some of the impetus behind my expressing my concerns. I think we've moved on from that point, because I shared that early, but did want to address it here. And again, I think you have given us something to think about. I want to read the letter again in more detail. And I would also say you made a comment, but I have to, about Mr. Matola's role and how you went from, so I want to look back at that, because I don't know how we arrived at this moment and where we got that. To me, I'm interested in now where do we go? You have a, we have a proposal on the table from the Charter Review Commission to reduce that number, and to me, it's really a question now of, I mean, I have to listen again to those comments made around that, so I don't want to comment specifically on any of the substance of what was in the two of your comments. But again, you've given me food for thought, and we'll take it seriously from this point, so.
Just related to that one comment, the April 4th CRC meeting at, I don't know, a minute, an hour and a few minutes into it, it was, this discussion was undertaken, and that's where that whole, you know, evolution of that, and the suggestion of, instead of A and not B, let's get something in between.
I certainly will listen to that again. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. Tom, do you have anything?
Other than to express my thanks for the time and effort, not right now, I'm going to read the letter again, but thank you for putting it together and submitting it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Are you putting your water on top of your phone?
Yes.
That's going to be, you're probably going to have a problem there.
I have nowhere else to put it. I don't want to put a ring on the town property.
It's fine. Okay. Thank you. Is there any other members that have any comments, anything on the public hearing last week at all? I mean, you guys spent a whole lot of time, so I want to make sure if you have something you want to share or say.
Not me at this time.
Okay. Chairman?
I've said it all.
Okay. Any, but on, I can't see everybody on our thing that well.
I'm all set. This is Marlene. I'm all set. I think it's all been said. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Is there anybody else? I don't think any other commissioners. Okay. All right. So I'll bring it back to the board. So where we left it last week was there was a tremendous amount of questions and feedback and Selectwoman Lefkowitz, I know, had a lot of questions. And I just want to say for the record that Attorney Baldwin, Town Attorney Baldwin, met with Nancy for, I would say, a considerable amount of time on Friday, going through the many articles. And I want to thank him for that, because that was, I think, helpful. I know Selectman Flynn had met prior with Attorney Baldwin to have questions answered and go through things, as well as Attorney Mednick. So I'm just going to open it up now. I know that some modifications Attorney Mednick were made to the document that you sent to us. And so if you would like, maybe the most productive way to go through this, so we're really efficient with our time, is that we would go through maybe each article that changes that were made, and Attorney Baldwin, if you want to jump in, based on conversations. But if you want to go through in a more strategic and focused way, and then I'll open it up to the board for each piece.
I'll give it back to you at the end of the meeting. Thank you, Madam, for Selectwoman, and I appreciate it.
Question before we start?
Yeah.
Sure.
I just want to understand what the goal is for today's meeting, to see where we need, or what the intention is. Are we, because here it says to act upon.
Right. So the goal, I think, like based, all right, so originally that was set up. I don't believe we will be voting in totality on anything today. I want us to have the opportunity, well, I want you and Tom to have the opportunity to ask any questions that you have and go through the document. to ask any questions that you have and go through the document, and so that we could...potentially we could start maybe, I don't know where we're going to get, but potentially maybe send some recommendations or start keeping a running list of recommendations that we want to send back to the Charter Revision Commission for additional review. My hope is that we will go through this process today. I don't believe we will finish today. Maybe there will be some small parts, maybe it'll be just a small sort of clerical thing, I'm not really sure. But as we go through, maybe we could have a running list of those items. And then I was hoping that...and I was going to ask the board if we could potentially be available on Thursday to do the follow-up, and then we would be able to send back information to the commission as we go through these articles with the attorneys, and then they can do their work, and then it can come back to us. How does that sound?
It doesn't sound like I'm aligned completely, if I'm just can speak frankly. Attorney Baldwin and I did meet along with two members of the public on...and it was very productive. Thank you, Attorney Baldwin. And we did a forensic accounting of the document as it was at the time, and it was six hours. And we didn't...we got through half of it, so I could start asking the questions, and I have made a running list of those. I think what's first of all important is that we're going to continue our work, Attorney Baldwin and I, tomorrow, so that we can ask some detailed questions, so that I can prepare a list, so I'm not wasting this body's time, but want to make sure that I'm thorough in the questions that I have. I think it's a holiday week. I have great concerns that not everybody who might want a chance to pay attention is able. I certainly can't meet on Thursday again. It is a vacation week for me. I certainly...I don't want to be obstructionist. I do want to keep the ball moving, but I'm not going to be ready on Thursday. And I would like to understand, as I think members of the public would like to understand, the timeframe. We never, as a body, at least I don't think, and I haven't been able to prove myself otherwise, prove otherwise, we didn't vote on a timeline. So right now, we've been working with the assumption that we're going to be ready for the election in November, and we may be, and I'm not functioning as if we shouldn't be. I just think that it's important, one, that we discuss the timeline as a body, that we understand both from timing it out from the election, but also the statutory reality of it. And we shouldn't be rushing to make some imagined timeline that we actually haven't even discussed yet. So I think it's important to also talk about the calendar so that we know as a body, but also so the public knows the amount of time we have, because I...it's, you know, we have 45 days from the original delivery of the document to the town clerk until we have the last public hearing. So at the end of this, and I don't want to shut down from that possibility, shut the possibility down, that we may need a public hearing based on both today's meeting and then my continued work with Attorney Baldwin. So to me, there's still too many loose ends, and I don't want to deliver a partial list. I would be opposed to delivering a partial list to the CRC in the fear that, one, statutorily then it starts a clock, but also I think we need to be looking at it more holistically. So those are just my questions, observations, concerns.
So I would leave the timeline of questions to Attorney Mednick and Town Attorney Baldwin. I would say, however, this process started nine months ago. I repeatedly asked the Board of Selectmen to engage in it, to make themselves available to the commission, to sign on to meetings, to speak to them, to watch their meetings, to be engaged in the process. Yes, I think it...I don't know that we necessarily voted on a resolution per se about the date, but I think it was very obvious to everyone that we expected to have this prepared and ready to be on the ballot for November when most of the electorate would be attending the election. I mean, not by a referendum process. As a matter of fact, I don't believe we ever discussed a referendum process, because that is a difficult bar to measure, to get certain percentages of people to show up, and we were always talking about having it on the November ballot.
We actually...sorry, with all due respect, we didn't talk about it at all as a body.
I mean, we could go back and look at the meetings, and if you want to do that, and tell me where we absolutely did not, but I believe we did talk about it being on the ballot in November. I believe the CRC has well-discussed it. So the bottom line is, I think, is that we have opportunities. Attorney Mednick and Attorney Baldwin have repeatedly offered themselves to speak to members of the Board of Selectmen and to myself, and members of the commission have done that as well. They were always available for conversation, for phone calls throughout this entire process. So I'm not inclined to delay the process because people didn't take the opportunity to utilize that, to be involved or engaged.
So with...sorry, with all due respect, this is not about utilizing opportunity. I did utilize that opportunity, and we do have 16 months statutorily, and I'm not suggesting we delay the process to delay it. I'm saying we give it its due. We did not talk about it as a body, and I think it's important that we talk about it now. And this is not just about the three of us, it's about the public engagement. And so we can get into a back and forth, because I will stand firm on that, but I do think it's important that we talk about the dates, what is statutorily allowed.
Well, let's definitely talk about those, and then we can dive into the articles and have those, you know, productive conversations.
Great.
And again, once items of change or things are sent to the CRC, that's not the end of the process. The members of the Board of Selectmen can still be engaged, be part of that process, as can the public. And then it would come back to the Board of Selectmen for further discussion and vote. So it's not as if it's going to happen in five minutes. It's going to be a bit of a process. And Attorney Mednick, would you like to discuss the timeline?
Happy to.
Let's just get the timeline out, so then we can move on.
I want to correct, though, something that you just said, if I may. Yes, it's not the last time it comes back, but it's my understanding that the CRC can only look at issues that we bring to them to look at. So the more informed we are with that list, the more productive that conversation can be, or the more fair and transparent that process is. Because if we don't know what not to ask, we can't retroactively ask it again. So am I...
Yes. I thought I might take a shot at answering the immediate timeline that the board is looking at right now. You have 20 days from the...sorry, 15 days from the date of the public hearing, which was the 27th.
The last public hearing, which we have 45 days to have.
Right, the last public hearing. So that gives this board until Tuesday next week to act and vote, to send something back to the CRC.
Excuse me, but respectfully...
I haven't finished yet.
We have 45 days, though, from the initial...so you're not actually giving us the full timeframe of what's allowed to us. It's from the last public hearing. So if we have to...
Yeah, I haven't finished. So if I could just finish.
And just so we're really clear, please let me chair the meeting, let him finish speaking, and then I'll bring it back to the board.
Okay.
So I don't mean to be argumentative, Nancy, but I just hadn't finished saying what I was going to say, and it would have included what you were discussing and bringing up.
Fair enough, sorry.
Okay?
Yep.
So you have 15 days from the date of that last public hearing to bring it back to the CRC. I think it should be, this is my opinion, but I think it should be the objective of the board to accomplish that task. I think that two full working sessions should be enough. If it's not enough, for whatever reason, then there is a method, a vehicle, by which you can then have another public hearing and add additional days with which the board would have to make its decision and recommendations, and then send it back to the CRC. So that's what your immediate timeline looks like. Then the CRC, I'll let Steve get into their timeline, but I think that everybody, all the board members are cognizant of that process and how it's intended to be one which is of collaboration with board members, because these are your questions or concerns or issues that you're sending back to them for them to resolve, hopefully in a way that's acceptable to the board.
So to be clear, Jim, so you're saying 15 days from the public hearing that we had last week? Is that accurate?
It's 15 days from the last public hearing.
That was last week.
And that was last Monday. So that's...according to my calculations, takes you to Tuesday, the 12th. And...
Monday, the...
And but...
That's last year.
But that doesn't mean that you...that doesn't mean that you can't have another public hearing to extend the period.
So could you please just...let's be clear about this. We have 45 days to hold the public hearing from the time the document is submitted. So this, looking at Tuesday as the last public hearing, is actually deceiving, or it's a misconception, or whatever word you want to put in there. The fact is, we do have statutorily 45 days from June 20th to hold public meetings.
Yes, yes, you do. But just to be clear, the term "public hearing" has special meaning. It's not the same as a meeting of the Board of Selectpersons. So Tuesday's meeting is not intended to be, or whatever, maybe it's Monday or Thursday, whenever the board chooses to have another meeting. My recommendation is that it happen by Tuesday to afford the board the possibility of not having to schedule yet another public hearing just for the purpose of extending your time with which to send it back to the CRC.
It may not be with the purpose of extending time, but rather giving the public enough time and us as a body to digest all that is in here.
Yeah, that's for the board to consider and discuss and resolve.
Let me...
Can I ask?
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah. All right. Let's just begin with the end in mind, okay? It was always clear to me, and I'll only speak for myself, that our goal, the goal of the CRC, the goal of the Board of Selectmen, was to get whatever the Charter Revision recommendations would be in front of the public in the next municipal election, okay? Let's say...or rather, the next state election, not municipal election, meaning this November. If that's still our goal, which I believe it should be, that's the end point. How do we get there, right? How do we back up from there? What's the date that we need to hit for that? I don't care in terms of, from an inconvenience standpoint, whether we need another public hearing or not. If we do, so be it. What I want to do is get the best document I can that we're comfortable with on the ballot. So Mr. Mednick or Mr. Baldwin, what is that date that we need to hit for this to be filed or whatever has to happen statutorily to go on the ballot in this November?
We need to get the ballot questions into the Secretary of State's office the first week in September.
Okay.
So working back from that, you probably, as a body, the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority, have to approve, whatever it is you do approve or disapprove, by the end of August, with enough time to get the town clerk to put this document in the hands of the Secretary of State. You also need to approve ballot questions at that point. Those are the things that go to the Secretary of State.
So that's the specific wording?
That is, yeah. It's a ballot question.
Wouldn't it be more clear on the date in September?
I think it's September 2nd or September 4th. It's the first week in September, so it would be...
Then it needs to be submitted.
It needs to be submitted to the Secretary of State.
Fine. So now, in deference to our colleagues on the CRC, we're going to have questions, comments, concerns, things that we want them to look at, and they're going to need, I'll look over at the chairman, two to three weeks to review that? What's...I mean, we are coming up in the middle of summer, I understand that, so people have vacations and everything else.
I think a month is more comfortable with.
A month? Okay, so a month, so that would mean if we're looking at voting...I'm just throwing this out there, right? If we're looking at an August 15th vote to get the wording right by the end of September, then we're looking at having recommendations to you, right, by the beginning of September. We're looking at needing to have recommendations that you look at by July 15th, give or take, which is the end of next week, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So now, I'm going to leave the legal, you know, when do we need, you know, to have public hearings and all that. I'll leave that to you guys. But basically, you're...what we're saying is, in order to hit the ballot for November, we need to have things in your hands by July 15th, you get it back to us by August 10th to 15th. I'll jam you a little bit, right? Then we need to approve that and get that to the Secretary of State by the beginning of September, right?
Yeah. Well, I would add with the caveat, it is, it depends upon the scope of what you send back, based on what I'm hearing, that there is going to be several different areas that we're going to have to consider. And keep in mind, this is an all-volunteer board.
Understood.
There are summer schedules, so there could be some scheduling challenges. So I think a month is a conservative estimate, quite frankly.
Well, all you get is 30 days, so that's the maximum that you can get.
That's statutorily.
Yeah, that's statutorily, 30 days.
So they...see, so just to be clear, once the board sends it to them, they only get 30 days.
Only get 30 days.
The clock starts ticking.
That is correct.
Which goes to Nancy's point, I think, of send it all in one tranche as opposed to several different tranches, because I would assume, once you send the first tranche, the 30-day.
The statute doesn't talk about tranches. The statute talks about sending recommendations, and it doesn't...I'd be careful about doing it incrementally. I was asked this in other towns just today. Somebody raised it with me in one of my other cities as well. I will say to my commission, my good friends on the commission, who I happen to be in a room with, that you probably will not...I've never used 30 days, even with very difficult...I had 28 items from one of my legislative bodies to the commission. A lot of the work has been done and can be done very quickly. I believe the commission can knock this out very quickly, so that I don't want to argue against their case, but I've never seen a case where I've needed all 30 days.
Yeah, the only...
Ryan's eyeballs are doing this right now.
Quite frankly...
So I think you're scaring him a little.
Attorney Mednick, my bigger consideration for that, quite honestly, fully volunteer board, middle of July through middle of August, right? And that would...that's why I say the 30 days...
Just one point out for the record.
I think you're right. Deliberations probably don't take that long. Convenience and respect of schedule probably takes that long.
And there'll be negotiations going on as well.
Yeah.
So just to...okay, just to bring it back, so I see, Nancy, can I just finish, and I'll call on you when we're done, I'm done? Okay, so the Secretary of State has to have the language by 9:02 to have it on the ballot in November. Okay. And August 15th, you think...so July 15th for us would be a good timeline to give it back to them, to have it back to us, but then there's this whole, just I want to be clear, you brought up that process about us actually writing the ballot questions.
You have to write the ballot questions.
Yeah, so now that's sounding like it could be a bit complicated and take some time, to the amendment.
I have always...once the commission comes up with its final report...
Sure.
When you send your recommendations, you're going to know what the parameters are. You're going to know what the controversial questions are.
Right.
I believe that Attorney Baldwin, myself, could begin to really fashion what those...what the breakdown would be based on the issues that we know are controversial, depending on where you end up. Some of them may go away. Some of them may not go away. You don't know where they're going to be, but you can begin...there's an omnibus question that can be drafted today, when it comes right down to, in terms of the overall reorganization of the document, that can be crafted today. The more difficult ones to speculate on are those that are going to be controversial, because we don't know what you're going to do, and we don't know what they're going to do in that process. And so the hope would be that we'd find a way to resolve a lot of issues, but we don't know that that's going to happen. But I usually get that done the same time that we do the final approval.
So how long would you say, just based on your experience, does that...so it comes back from the CRC? Obviously, the board is engaged during that.
You have only 15 days of that...or 14 days at that point to act, you know, when they do it.
Which is the end of August.
Which is the end of August. That's why I usually try to do an August 15th date, and if we go to July 15th, you're going to have to have another public hearing. If you move beyond July 13th, you're going to have to...or you have the 12th, I think, Jim, the way you counted, but whatever it is.
Can I ask a question on the public hearing? When does that public hearing have to take place, just so that we know?
It had to be within, statutorily, within 45 days of the filing of the draft report.
Yeah.
You did yours very quickly.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to get to...and Nancy, my apologies if I cut you off. Yeah, no, I'm just trying to get to, and Nancy, my apologies if I cut you off. If we vote at the end of next week, the 14th or the 15th, the 15th happens to be a Friday or the 14th, it's a Thursday. Does the public hearing, obviously.
Excuse me, could, any call-in people or people on WebEx, please mute your phones? Sorry.
Yeah, how about closing documents, save it in there?
Um, can they hear us?
Thank you.
You ought to say it.
Karen Whackamit, Karen, is that you?
I'm so sorry, I thought I was muted, I apologize.
Okay, can everyone please mute their phones, please? And WebEx, thank you.
So we would have to have the hearing, I mean theoretically, if we did this, right, you'd have the hearing, what, on the 12th?
You'd have to do the hearing before, before extending it, before you get to the deadline.
Can I ask about the CRC, though? So, I mean, we could have a public hearing, but we don't really have, it has to go back to the CRC and then come back to us. So to me, that would be sort of not productive public hearing, right? I mean.
But statutorily, if you're going to go beyond the 15 days from the current public hearing to go to the 15th or the beginning of the following, whenever you decide to report out, if it goes beyond 15 days, you're going to need to have a public hearing as a matter of technical.
Now, is there any statutory obligation by the CRC to do that as well?
They have no legal obligation to have a public hearing, but.
But the Board of Selectmen can be very actively engaged in those meetings.
Oh, absolutely. I, I am recommending that the Board of Selectmen attend every meeting, be there to work and help guide the CRC, because ultimately, the CRC wants to make sure that they've got a majority vote on the Board of Selectmen. You are the appointing authority, and this next period is going to be quite critical. The other thing I recommend is, if you are making recommendations, don't be specific, be broad. So for example, let's use one that, I'm going to make up right now, that you want to debate the size of the RTM. That's not been a big issue in this one, but I thought I would raise that. Don't be specific about numbers. Say that you want to look at the total membership of the RTM. And then that leaves the room for discussion, if you want them to have that discussion. If you don't, then you don't send it back to them.
All right, so, okay, I think we have kind of an understanding of where we are on time, and then they have it for no more than 30 days, CRC?
Yeah.
And we could be actively engaged in talking to them during that process, which is obviously open to the public, on fair TV, and everyone can hear it and it's transparent.
The first meeting is a conferral meeting where you actually sit with them and confer with them on the recommendations that you'll be making to them.
And the attorneys as well.
We'll be there.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify, okay, go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you. Tom, you used the word "obvious," and I would like to understand, because to me, not obvious, because we, this is the first time that we've had a public conversation around dates and timing, and.
When did I use the word obvious?
Just now, you said it was obvious to you. And it, and about the timing and that we were prepared to have this ready for the, the next election. I'm not saying I wouldn't get there, and I likely may be in a minority position. I'm just suggesting that we can't call on process when it's convenient, and then when it's not, throw caution to the wind, if you will. Because the fact is, there are statuto, stat, there's statutory language in place for a reason. I respect that it's been nine months of diligent, hard work, I don't question that, but by statute, we have 15 months. So again, I'm not suggesting that that's what should have happened, it's just we, we haven't had this conversation around the table. And so, if I may, we do, by statute, have 45 days, and we've discussed this. But just back of the envelope, literally, math, we could carry and discuss and engage the public through October, the end of October, 15 months from its initial date would bring us to October. So I'm not saying that's what should happen, I'm just saying we need to be making sure that we're taking the time we need, so that the public is heard, that we've had all our questions answered, that we've thoroughly stretched this the way that is appropriate, so that when it comes time to be on the ballot, it would be really nice if we could be united. We may not get there, but certainly we should feel that the process has been fair and that we've all been heard and respected in terms of our thoughts and opinions.
Attorney Mednick, do you want to?
No, that's not how it works. The draft report has been filed. That's the, that is the date the clock starts ticking.
The genie is out of the bottle.
Respectfully, I agree, but we never, we didn't have the conversation initially, so yes, the genie is out of the bottle.
You and I talked about it when we first talked. We talked about the ballot next November.
Respectfully.
No, respectfully, yes, we did.
Excuse me, respectfully, we didn't, as a body, vote on anything or talk about it publicly. We can put this to rest and get to the heart of the content here, but I have said it for the record and.
Look, I.
I stand there.
When we started this process, there was an end goal in mind. There's nothing that's been shown to me that says that as we sit here today, we can't meet that end goal of having it on the ballot in November. The reason that's appealing to me is I don't think you'll get the turnout in a referendum for this to count. And then I don't know what happens after a referendum if you fail to get the turnout. When you have the election, you're going to get people to the polls anyway. I think between the nine months of work that's been done and then month and a half that we have to do our work to get it submitted, or actually two and a half months to get it submitted to the, two months, to get it submitted to the Secretary of State, there's more than enough effort. There's more than enough time. I would rather, like I said, begin with the end in mind. The end is that, what do we need to do over the next eight weeks, seven weeks, to hit that goal? And if there's something that people don't like, they don't want to move forward, we don't move it forward. If there's something that we think is worthy of consideration, we move that forward. And I'll go back to a comment that was made earlier, let's not let perfect be the enemy of good. And that's what I'd say. So I'm, I'm ready to discuss the issues. If we want to wait to vote on it to next week, that's fine by me. I'll be in video, but I, I will, I will most assuredly make myself available for one, two, three meetings, whatever, whatever needs to happen in order to get this in the hands of the CRC for our, begin our joint work over the next month.
And I'll just counter that respectfully, my goal is to ha, to deliver to the public for a vote what is most reasonable and sound and in, for the good health, safety, et cetera, and well-being of the town, not necessarily to meet a deadline that is somewhat arbitrary. I agree.
I think that, how's it arbitrary? It's a, no, because I disagree with what you just said, because you implied that maybe that wasn't my goal. The goal was always to get it on the ballot, and the goal clearly was to do it well and have it be thoughtful and have it be thorough. None of that, by hitting a deadline, is implied to not be the case.
All right. All right, so with the goal in mind of doing our work, making ourselves available as much as we can so we can get the work done to get this on the ballot in November, I will open it up to Attorney Mednick, and obviously Attorney Baldwin can work in concert with each other, because they've been both intimately involved doing this. If you would like to open it up to the first one, Attorney Mednick, and then talk about the changes, and then we can have a board discussion.
Well, let me explain, after Attorney Baldwin met on Friday, we ended up agreeing that we would try to do a diligent, almost paragraph by paragraph red line of the document because of the massive transformation of the document. It was impossible to do a traditional red line. And so we undertook that project over the weekend, and we have created a document that you have before you that shows the, the changes. And what you're going to find in Chapter 1, I, I will try to go over things that, that are different, if there are any differences. The definition, all the clean new definitions are brand new. The definition of contract is one of the few current terms that we have in the charter, and you'll see when you look at the red line.
So we don't have the benefit of the red, because we don't have a computer that does.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, we're in our town hall that does that.
I sent you the color.
I know, on our computer, we can see it, but.
Yeah.
So can you just maybe reference pages?
I'll be happy to.
Because what we have here has little page numbers.
Yeah, the pages should be same, because I see also you're shaved. You don't have the side comments on this one, but I'll take you. So my first one is page four. Page four. The definition of contract.
Okay.
And you'll see the language here is the difference between the definition that's currently in the charter and the one that we have proposed. The one we have proposed includes a lot of examples of what a contract is. And, and so this is simply a modification of the term "contract." This is not an action provision, this is simply a definition that provides for a common understanding of what a contract is for every department of the town, including the Board of Education.
The, I want to compliment you on this one, because I was involved 12, 14 years ago on a whole thing about a memorandum of understanding and then side letters and whether they were contracts or not, so listing them in here, to me, was, was very well done.
Thank you, yeah, this is based on years of experience in these types of questions, including going back to my time as a local legislator. The other, the other changes you'll see, if you go down below that to number eight, which is elected town officials, you'll see that we've eliminated some of the various terms. This is for the elected official as opposed to all town officials. So it really does lay out the, the differences. Most of the new ones just come through as new definitions. The significant definitions here are meeting notice and public notice. In both cases, the reason that I recommend these, and the reason the Charter Commission approved these recommendations, is in your current charter, you will note, there's a number of places that talks about public notice, and there may be different standards at different places. What this does is it establishes one standard that can be determined by ordinance. The RTM could establish an ordinance that establishes a notice standard. If they want a particular notice standard, the body can do it, or state law will tell you what the notice standard is. So this requires you, at the very least, to meet the statutory requirements of law. It eliminates cases of newspaper notice unless you, as a town, believe there should be newspaper notice. We live in an era where you can provide notice on, online. You could provide notice in all di, all way, different ways. There would be newspaper, for example, there's newspaper notice in this charter. You have no require, you, we have a requirement to post the charter in a newspaper by state law. So this notice section would, would recognize that. So this gives you one place where you look every time they say notice, and if you're a Board or Commission, you have to decide, work with the town clerk to make sure that you're complying with the local notice provisions. It retains definitions that are in here, town officer, modifies them a little bit, in-town official, town office. I had problems initially trying to figure out what those were. I ended up leaving them as they were, so I was not violating any cultural taboo in that. So the, so then the other things in this section are the standards of conduct. That is your current ethics code, you will find on the red line, that the only changes, or what I call.
Do you refer to the page again?
I'm sorry, again, madam, for a second, page eight, Section 1.5 might be the best way to do it.
1.5, got it, standards of conduct.
Yeah, that's your current chapter 11, which is called Standards of Conduct. What, again, I think I explained this when we first raised the issue. We moved the ethics code from the back of the document to the front of the document. We thought it was important for the public to see upfront that there's a standard for ethics. The only changes are what I call edits. There was some concern about the use of the term "modification" in the footnotes. I've eliminated modification unless there's a true modification and have defined what an edit is. It's like a definitional change and those kinds of things, so that the footnotes are actually more useful to, to all of you and to the public. Section 1.6 on page nine is new. That is the rules of order and civility. And I think I explained this, I don't know if I have to go through it again, but I want to explain, if you look under rules of order and then you look under open meetings and, and record-keeping as well, I think. Record-keeping, yeah, public records, A and B, you're going to see two different versions in your red line. The reason there are two different versions is there are currently two different versions in the charter. I wanted to show what the differences were in the proposed language and in the current language in two different places. You will only have one section on parliamentary guidance, you're only going to have one section on records and one section on open meetings. But that's the essence of the red line, and it shows you the difference between the language we've recommended to you and the language that's in the current charter. I was trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison, which you couldn't do, because those, those definitions were deep in, in the body of the charter. So in the final version of the charter, you're just going to see one section on public records. This shows you the evolution, how you got there.
Okay.
All right? That's it in Article One, Article One.
Is there any questions from the Board on any sections of Article One?
No, not by me.
Nancy, do you?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Article Two?
If, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just think that having had a very valuable discussion with, with Nancy and other members of the public, some questions came out regarding the definitions, and I would suggest to the Board that maybe you identify the definitions as something to, for the CRC to take a more careful look at. One example in particular is a definition of ordinances, which includes in its definition regulations, and then further in the definitions, you define regulations. Minor things like that, that I think could be rectified very, very easily. But, but to Steve's point earlier, you, you need to, to give a broad, a broad mandate to the CRC if you're going to do that. And also, I don't know if you're going to say this, Nancy, the, the definition of a elected town official, there's some suggestion, whether now's the time to talk about it or later, as to whether RTM members should be excluded, as they always have been by tradition ever since the town was represented by the citizenry in, in a classic town meeting. They were, they were not considered town officials. That stayed with the RTM members even when we went to a representative town meeting, and I'm not so sure that it's necessary to have that distinction anymore.
Does that fall under definitions with that?
It, it would fall under definitions, and it, then it comes up later in the document.
And I would say to your point, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Respectfully, I, that's why I was hoping to get through, since we did with Attorney Mednick last meeting, get through up to the budget process and stopped because of Mr. Flynn's hard-stop time. My hope was that we got through some of these changes, since we're now seeing this red line for the first time today, because I have that color-coded system that we worked on in our six-hour meeting and plan to, again, meet tomorrow. I'd like to be able to talk about those things holistically, because right now, yes, I have that on my list as something to discuss, but would want to be able to formulate in a more articulate way where that also fits in and find other examples. Now, I'm happy to go over them, but I think it will prevent us then, in a reasonable amount of time, from getting through the new red line, plus picking up where we left off last time. Because there are six pages of questions, so, which we may be able to get to.
Right, the, the new red line, I mean, nothing, there's nothing new in the document other than the formatting of the red line.
Right, except for he's starting from the, Mr. Attorney Mednick is starting from that place as opposed to where we left off.
Right.
Last time.
So would you prefer?
You want to go to the budget, I'm happy to go to the budget. Well, time out, we continued. We.
I'm happy to go to the budget. Well, timeout. We continued. We left off, and then we came back and we went onward from the budget, and we finished the document, didn't we?
Yeah, we did. That's right.
We went all the way through the document, but we didn't have this version of the red line when we went through the document.
Correct.
But we made it all the way through the document.
Conflating time. I don't even, can't even sit here.
Yeah, we stopped early last week. We, I, you're right, I had the hard stop. And then we came back and we actually started early, and we went through, you had your questions.
That's right.
We went through another hour and a half or whatever.
Okay, I was forgetting that we did that that hour.
Right. And then we did the public here.
Fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think now, now is the time. This is, roll up the sleeves.
Okay.
Right?
So, do we, um, okay, do we want to try to go through the articles, um, you know, now that it's been just a bit more organized, easier for us to see, or do you want to go how, how do you...
I'm, I'm perfectly...
And start creating that list?
So, I'm perfectly, me personally...
I'm perfectly comfortable stopping as, as we go through the document and saying, question here, comment here, all that. I'm interested, I understand, I think, the flavor of what you're trying to get to in terms of the definitions. Give me a little bit more color, because I'm totally fine in telling them to go clean up the definitions, but what did you find that's inconsistent in the definitions? Well, the two that I mentioned. One is the definition of ordinances, which includes regulations, and then later in the document, we have a definition of what regulation is.
Of regulation is.
I think that they, that needs to be looked at more carefully, so there's no possibility of confusion in the future. And the other issue is one which was raised in my meeting with Selectwoman Lefkowitz last week about the definition of a, an elected public official and whether that should exclude or continue to exclude RTM members as it currently does.
Well, you'll remember that we had that same discussion when you, myself, and Attorney Mendick got together in terms of RTM representatives as well.
We did.
Yeah. So, I'm happy to entertain that discussion. I think in general, the comment is go through and review the definitions for consistencies and more so inconsistencies in the definitions of the documents.
Yeah, I think I have that here, but I wanted to know if you, I think it's probably beneficial for us to go as we were going.
Sure.
Article by article.
And just keep, continue going.
Absolutely.
Because then we can, the information, I think, that you have in front of you. So, Sir Attorney Mendick, can you go then? Could we pick up?
Yeah, I'll move quickly through.
Yeah, Article Two.
Well, I, I have actually thoughts then, given that from Article One to make the list.
On Article One.
And I would encourage us, even if it turns out to be a minority position, I would encourage us, if any one of us, my hope would be that if any one of us have a concern or an issue, that it be put on this omnibus list.
True.
And that we don't necessarily edit in this moment.
Well, let's go through the list. I don't want to make a blanket, and I don't think anybody on the board should make a blanket agreement till things, until we get to those things.
Identify it as a hope and desire, so that we can come back to it, so we don't get stuck. So, for me, some of the concerns I had in, or questions, or something to re, be revisited, the absence of a table of contents as something to look at. The definitions, for sure. The use of contracts and the Board of Education issue in that as something we had discussed about last week. Town official, as Attorney Baldwin had talked about, as it excludes RTM, and is it inclusive of RTM? And I would want to have the CRC look at that in the broadest of terms.
Can I just interrupt you a second? Um, when, I'm looking at the table of contents here.
In the old, the index, like, the way it is laid out...
But this, I mean, is this good for you, or, I mean, did you want it some other way?
It's, I'm looking at notes, so I was sorry, I was not...
The one they sent us, the newest one?
Did you mean to say index?
Index.
Oh. As opposed to a table of contents?
Sorry.
Yeah, the recommendation. And if I could speak to that...
Table of contents versus an index.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't think, I mean, that's a formatting thing, which I don't think requires action per se. Is that right, Steve?
I think you do that after the commission is, after the charter's approved.
Right.
You do that. I think it's a great idea.
It is an excellent idea.
I've seen one, and I think, you know, it's a wonderful idea.
Great.
We will do that.
I have divided my thoughts by way of substance and then formatting questions, so...
No, it's a great, it's a good point, but, but what I'm saying is that we don't have to do it now.
An article from one.
The town clerk could probably do it when the document is appro, if the document's approved. I don't want to be presumptuous. You could do it to your current document if this one's not approved.
We'll, we'll strive, we'll strive to have an index for the version that is going to be disseminated to the public before they vote. There's no reason not to.
Yeah, we'll work on it.
Okay, Article, let's stay on Article One. Any other on this, Nancy?
Yep. The standards of conduct, I would want to have the CRC look at that again in terms of language, and also vis-a-vis ordinance language. What could be pulled out that's here in the charter versus what could be codified through code? And without getting too specific around the standards of conduct, I would like, and the rules of order and civility, I would like to have the CRC look at that, and then...
Do you have any...
But the CRC didn't make any changes in the standards of...
Right.
So, do you have a recommendation of what they should do?
Because they're the same as they were before?
To look at moving it from charter to ordinance, for instance.
Oh.
And then...
You have an ordinance, I believe.
Equity clause being inclusive there, or in the space of the rules of order and civility.
All right. So, the issues I have are the index, which Counselor Attorney Geek at the other end of the table is willing to work on, will work on it together. Definitions generally, but you specifically contract, but I'm not, I think you're talking more about the provision that deals with $100,000 as opposed to the definition of contract?
Well, it includes Board of Education here.
The Attorney, the Attorney, the Attorney of the town.
Was that Board of Ed change that was, and I...
We talked to the Board of Ed about the other change.
Correct.
And the attorneys agree with their attorney, and are going to try to work toward a change, I believe.
Okay.
But the definition is different, because the definition simply says, and we made this point to their attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, that this is just the definition. This doesn't...
And I think upon that explanation, the, the Board of Ed attorney was satisfied with that.
Okay, that's good information.
Town official, RTM issue, we get that. Standards of conduct, the concept of moving to ordinance, let me just explain there. You, you've stated my philosophy completely. I love to see things moved to ordinance. I think you, I don't know, do you have, do you not have an ordinance right now? Because the charter should stab, basically establish the Ten Commandments, and then the ordinances basically establish the books of the, the books of the Bible, Old and New Testament. And, and so, we had not, the commission had not looked at that issue, but, and it's going to be a hard one to look at, but I understand your point. So, I think we understand where that goes. You want to take like a DEI clause, that it would be similar to the standards of conduct and to the civility clause, and establish kind of a standard for equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion, right?
Correct.
All right. And then the last thing, civility. What do you want us to look at with regard to civility?
Um, it's inclusion here, the civility clause. I just want to have it examined in a deeper way. I don't necessarily...
Okay.
To the same.
Got it.
So, just to be clear, it says town officials and employees shall treat members of the public with respect and expect the same in return in official, in-person, or virtual electronic interactions. The town is committed to maintaining orderly administrative processes, and it keeps the town administrative offices free. That's all it says.
And then looking at it broadly, and I, again, it goes to, is, does this belong here? Does it belong more aptly in the town?
You're talking about the equity, is equity clause more here?
Exactly. So, I just think it has to be looked at more holistically.
Are there any other comments on Article One? I think this is useful, madam, for Selectwoman to, to go through this and try to at least get the list. Article, should I start Article Two?
Yeah, perhaps Attorney Baldwin, I have a note here under the open meetings section and public records. It's a question about, is it redundant or necessary? I'm not remembering what that note is, but we talked about it as something that we should bring up here today. Do you recall?
Yes, just because I, I believe that we say that we're supposed to abide by a state statute, and all meetings are supposed to be open and public. And I believe that there's one section in, in the article addressing the RTM where it also says that those meetings are to be open to the public, and I'm just questioning whether it's really necessary, because that's, that's a given for any, any town agency, no matter what size, a meeting has to be public.
So, it's just a question of redundancy. Those are the questions I had for Article One.
Excellent. Let me go through Article Two. I'll try to explain again, because I've gone through the document already, try to explain where we've picked up. I actually found one today. It's a duplication, it's not a, an error. 2.1 shows that we, now again, this may fall into the redundancy category, that the, one of the things that I was surprised at is you have very extensive elections provision. It was unclear to me how much of the elections provision you use versus the general statutes, and I just think it was important for the charter, the reason you have some of these provisions that kind of underscore belt and suspenders state policy is to make it clear to people that you are not an island in a municipality. Yes, of course, we know there has to be open meetings and public meetings, and we know you need to keep records in a certain way. But I've had, I've been at events defending municipalities where somebody says, well, the charter says this, but then you have to point out there's a collective bargaining agreement that trumps the charter, or there's a statute that trumps the charter. So, that's the reason you want to restate things sometimes in documents like this. 2.2, you're going to see, again, terminology changes in sections that are currently there. Subsection C, I think I, is a new section that simply talks about the preparation of lists of electors. That was kind of not here in the current, in the current go-around on the charter, or of the, of the current charter. No other rule changes there. We have the breakdown of the elections. Here, we have the thirty-member, thirty-member RTM. I assume that will be an issue on the list. Should we just stop right there and accept that that is a possibility?
Yeah, I have a couple of things to add already.
All right, but I just wanted to take that one and acknowledge that one up front. The other changes, as you would see going through here, are, again, edits that utilize new definitions. The one screw-up is I probably pushed the button twice, is in 2.4C. Those are the two breakdowns and the two classes of the Board of Education. I think in, in C1, the language is repeated twice. So, that's why you have such a big paragraph in one, and a smaller paragraph in two, one A, and a smaller paragraph in two B. So, that, that's the only change there. I'm trying to see if we picked up any, this is the chapter where we eliminate the constables as elected officials, and then we move them to an appointed status later on in the document.
I think, Steve, on the very bu, end of the document, though, on the very last pages, you list the elected officials, and I think you list, you forgot a lot.
No, no, I was showing you, thank you, it's a good point. The list at the end is, these are eliminated or replaced provisions. I wanted to show the current charts that exist. These are going away. So, the section we're looking at now is the substitute for these sections that have all the lists. That's why you see them in there. The whole section is being eliminated.
To that end, while you're stopping on that, may I say that as a point of clarity, perhaps on the list for the CRC, I would add that chart of appointments, because it's, it is clarifying, and it's, to me, it, and some other comments that I've heard, it's confusing as it is, and maybe just a formatting issue?
So...
To look at it, because that chart in the old, in the current version, may not be a current proposal, but it's a format that's...
Got you.
Clear.
So, you would like them to look at reinstating that chart. Do we eliminate the language that we have here that clarifies what's in that chart? That chart, chart's simply a list.
Right. It just, visually, it's a, it's a good representation. Does it eliminate? I, again, I'd rather err on the side of being broad as a...
Excuse me, I have no idea where we are. Can you mention some?
Section two, we're in Article Two, section two, we were looking at, really, section 2.3, where we start to list the elected officials, the commencement dates of their terms and things like that.
2.4.
Well, you're, you're a much more advanced reader than the rest of us, I think. I moved on there because I thought we were. So, there, there were some charts in the current document that fall roughly in that area, and so, we now have that on our list as well.
To this point, can I add something else for discussion? If I may, the separate, separation out in this proposed version of First Selectmen versus the Board of Selectmen.
For example, in 2.3A, one and two, why do one and two need to be separated? It should just be the Board of Select Persons, and I think that that, that's done throughout the document, and if I understand, Selectwoman Lefkowitz, the suggestion is to pare it down and simplify it, and that makes perfect sense.
No problem with that.
In my view.
The other one, you, I just want to hear publicly the acknowledgement for the discussion for the CRC, the size of the RTM.
I just mentioned it on the line.
No, I just, it's on the list.
Yeah, yeah, got it. There's the duplication, I'll take care of that. On the Board of Education, classes, the class of five and the class of four, so we're going to understand one election cycle where there are five who run, and, and another where there are four, and I simply pushed a button that duplicated the language there. So, you'll see in the cleaned-up version, that will not be there. I'm trying to see if there are any other changes in this section of note. The, I added, I do want to point out there were a couple of erratas that I picked up on in this section. If you go to 2.8B, three and four, three was left out. This was probably pulled out when we were looking at the NPR, the Minority Party Representation provision. I recommend that, I will recommend to you, to recommend to the commission, that they put these provisions back in for errata. Those are the only, that's the only errors that I found in this section. And that's it for that. I'm trying to just go through to show you what has changed because of the red line, if anything. Anything else?
Yeah, some, what was of some discussion between Attorney Baldwin and me, discussion with me, was the method of filling vacancies on the Board of Select Persons and language around that. I think it's worthy of a discussion, whether it's here, or, I, I do think it's worthy of a discussion between the, this body in terms of how vacancies are filled. I don't necessarily think it's something that ultimately we would send back, but I think it's something that we should, I would like us to talk about, whether it's today or it's more philosophical, because again, some of these things, like the RTM, are going to need more time and thought, and I would love with the First Selectwoman's approval to put that on an agenda where we can flesh out some of those bigger ones that today we just kind of talked through the list, and then...
Yeah, I, I can summarize that issue, if you'd like.
Yeah, I just think it's worthy of a bigger...
When the, the term was changed from a two-year term to a four-year term for the Board of Select Persons, the method of filling a vacancy was not, and the, the then-current and still remains current version is somewhat based upon a relatively short time span of two years maximum between elections. So, the suggestion has been made maybe to, if there is a vacancy, to have it filled at the next general election. Is that, is that a fair summary of...
Next municipal general election.
The next municipal...
So, appoint someone until such time that the next general election takes place, and then have them run for the remaining two-year term.
That's right. And, and that furthermore is alternative to having a special election, which currently is allowed for under the statutes and under our current charter. for under the statutes and under our current Charter. Special election could be triggered under certain situations, and this would conceivably avoid a special election and have it go to a more general election, which might be preferred by members of the Board or the Commission.
The only caveat to that is you'd have to make a provision for, if it was the one seat, the minority seat on that board, it has to stay minority regardless.
That's correct. That would not change.
Right.
That would not change.
So you wouldn't, so how would you handle that in terms of, would you force, you know, in this instance, two Democrats or Democrat and an independent to run in that off year for that third spot, right? That would need to be flushed out. I understand the concept.
Yeah, the current language doesn't require, and nor would the Charter revision being suggested, would necessarily require the election to happen. It could be by agreement.
But that'd be a, I mean, we saw, I think you know, we saw a big fight over the vacancy provision in the current document. What I'm saying is, you'd, all I'm saying is, you'd have to carve it out separately if it was the minority candidate. Would you not, or would you?
It would be, it is now, and it would stay that way. Minority representation is not going away under any scenario.
Agreed. I'm just trying to figure out, it's just, would you hold the election or not?
Well, as a practical matter, you might, well, you would have an election because you have petitioning candidates who could run, who would fall into the minority.
That's kind of what I was thinking, right.
Or minority parties that would fall into that category.
Depends, it depends on how you write it.
Yeah.
Currently, it's written so that it can be done by agreement, and it goes no further unless there's a petition by 15% of the electors.
Electors.
But you could keep everything in place.
Yeah.
And just have the trigger being not within the mandated.
But the statute, which is defaults to, has a trigger if there is a petitioning candidate. We're just going through this in New Haven, frankly.
That's right. And I don't think you would lose that.
We don't, yeah, we don't have to change anything.
I don't think you would change that, right. But, but the suggestion being that instead of going to a special election, I think that's, that's.
Yeah, it's how we do.
Part of the thing to avoid.
It's how we do the Board of Finance, it's how we do the other top part.
It's not exactly the same. But we, it's something that I think is a good idea to look at.
I'll leave that, I'll leave that issue on the table unless you're satisfied with this discussion.
I think we should leave it on the table again, mostly, so that we all have a chance to digest personally. I brought some cups down.
Oh, good.
If anybody wants to fill up in the hallway, there's some water.
When we take a break, I will do so. The, are there any other issues in this article?
Well, yeah.
This is not the end of.
Article 2.8, yep.
Yeah, we're in Section 2.8, everybody. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Keep it, everybody up. We really made no changes in these sections. I did point out the errata in this section that we left out, something that has, that's a pretty important provision regarding the election of RTM members. Should I move on to Article Three?
Okay, did it move to Article Three?
It is for me.
All right. Very good.
Okay, so Article Three, again, picked up, I noticed that we changed the word, actually, I think this is from "all legislative power" to "the legislative power." That's language I tend to use and recommend in other communities. If you want to keep the "all," be my guest, but I noticed that was the only change that I actually noticed in this, it actually was in the old red line, but it was not something I focused on, but I was focusing on this for obvious reasons over the weekend. In Section 3.2, again, the 30-member issue shows up there, so we know that that is on the list.
And I would, I would just say that I would want that language looked at as it relates to this article as well.
No, I.
Okay. I'm just taking the reference.
That's why I referenced it.
That's a given.
Yep, that's a given. The, I raised a question, and I'll have you guys look at it, in 3.2A1D and, I'm sorry, E and F, as I was looking at the language, I think we already say this earlier, and so I'd ask Attorney Baldwin maybe to take a look at, we did not talk about this over the weekend, we talked about a lot of things, but I think that if you look at E and F, that language does actually show up in another place in the document, and so it may not be necessary, but I didn't want to make a decision to recommend deletion. I think we should look at that. So that is something that came up in the red line that I thought was useful to bring to your attention. We fixed, Selectperson Lefkowitz raised the errata issue of the Board of Selectmen being, Selectpersons being off the RTM, and I, I just put the Select Persons, all of you are on there, as an errata that should be fixed in the document.
Okay.
The other issue that came up, actually Attorney Baldwin actually found this one, 3.3B, this is interesting language. This was, again, left out inadvertently because it occurred during the time where we were reducing the size of the RTM, more of a council structure, and so we eliminated the open town meeting language, and it did not go back in. It will go back in there, so that it makes it clear that the moderator has all the powers of a moderator for an open town meeting. So that's an errata that should be replaced back in there.
And to that end, I don't know if this is a formatting issue, errata, or if it's intentional, but under B, election of moderator duties, and if you look at it vis-à-vis deputy moderator, deputy moderator says from among its voting members, moderator, that sentence is left out. So I don't know if that is intended to change its meaning, if it's just a formatting issue.
Well, no, we could put that back in there. I mean, that was, it was not intentional, but it might have just been language that we thought was extraneous in one paragraph and didn't notice it in the other, but if you want to put that back in, that's really, I would do an errata on that.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody else?
Is it there?
It's there under deputy moder.
It's under deputy moderator, but it's not under the moderator. Yeah.
I shouldn't be saying it, but yeah, it's just a.
Yeah, no, so I'm happy to fix that.
As I said, I didn't know if it was a formatting issue, errata, or just. One thing I brought up as something to possibly look at, does the definition of parliamentarian need clarification, a clarifying sentence? I don't necessarily have a strong feeling. It was just something that came up, so.
It's a pretty well-known term, but you could define it in your rules if you want.
Yeah, and it's very much up to the moderator.
It's up to the moderator.
As to how they want that role to be used and applied, because they ultimately have the gavel, so.
We also, sorry, were you?
You're on a roll. Please, be my guest.
Under public hearings and notice, if this is new language.
Oh, just before that, then.
Yeah, okay, yep.
But under 3.4B, we have another open meeting standard that, again, falls, personally, between you and me, I don't think that's a standard you could repeat enough in a Charter, but, you know, if you think it's redundant, that's another place where it's stated. That's all I'm saying.
Wasn't this part of your August 30th presentation, this part?
I'm just trying to point out some places where we picked up mistakes.
Got it.
All right. All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Your public hearing.
Just a question of if it's new language, just, does it have greater implication? And Attorney Baldwin suggested something I bring up today.
What do you mean, does it have greater implication?
Other than, because it.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
What this is doing, and it's important, and I recommended it because it was not here, and I think it was a recommendation I made when we were looking at trying to structure it as a council. Ordinances are laws, and, again, this goes back to the whole open meeting standard, the idea of having a constitutional standard, and this is your constitution, for a public hearing, at least one public hearing, on any ordinance. I made a recommendation, because I thought it was an important concept, and I'm not sure that the Commission thought this was one of the Ten Commandments, but the Commission supported it, because I think they agreed that it's an important legislative standard.
I think that's what we do now, though.
Yeah, but this is for the RTM.
Yeah, that's what the RTM does.
But this just makes a standard requirement. If you don't, if you don't think it's necessary, it shouldn't be there.
It might be in the rules to regulate, I'm not sure.
But the rules can be changed.
It always was that way. You had to have a holdover, you couldn't just do it.
And this could go away. This is an extraneous provision. If you believe it's ingrained in your culture.
I don't think it's not a bad thing.
Yeah. If it's ingrained in the culture, then don't worry about it. What constitutions worry about is the next administration, the next majority, doesn't want to do it, and they've taken away something that historically has been true, but they don't want to have public hearings, and they want to operate more efficiently by fiat, et cetera. This was just a public hearing standard.
And so the intention was just to codify something that is already ingrained in.
It sounds like, yeah. Yep. The meeting notice section is significantly shorter because we refer to the definition. That's why that is changed. And then.
So this is new language in 3.5B?
3.5B is new language.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, what's the intention there with new language? I was just curious if there was.
The intent of the new language, again, it was my recommendation, based on trying to have the RTM working as a legislative body, that their legislation should be given a number, it should be filed with the clerk, it should be treated as law, and it should be treated with respect. That's simply the essence of that provision. It's pretty standard in most how a bill become law provisions and charters. I don't think I found, we didn't do research finding out whether there was a problem or a mistake, that was just a proactive.
I would, I would suggest that it be bookmarked for discussion, to go over it with the town clerk in particular. The length, referring to it being indexed within five days, et cetera, may not comport with current practice, which is, seemed to work.
Yeah, so let's put that on, so that's 3.5, for everybody's edification, 3.5B is We made no changes, I will point out again, as I did the other day, referendum is now here, because referendum is the end of the legislative process. There were no changes except for edits, you'll see in that section, and.
I did have a question about the voting hours and method. When we talk about principles of equity, I would just, I understand why it's there in terms of limiting the hours, but on the flip side, I would say it's something perhaps we could talk about at some point before we send this list back, to make the voting hours more expansive and inclusive.
In what, when you.
Because when you are limited by one hour during referendum, it excludes people who work certain hours, certain parents.
These are the old primary hours.
Yeah, it's old, exactly.
Yeah, and primaries are now six to eight, like elections, and that's what this is. We didn't, the Commission didn't address, it hadn't come up, so leave it up to the Board of Selectmen to decide what to do about that. That's in 3.6B, I believe.
I'm sorry, I, I mean, the last, I mean, I pulled a petition of referendum back in the day, to, I could get to high schools, and I thought the hours were normal voting hours.
They may have been in that instance, but per Charter, this says that it's a shorter period of time, or can be, a shorter period of time.
Oh, can be.
Shall be. Is that?
Shall be open at 12 o'clock PM, noon. That's a good one.
So I just think it's worthy of, again, we don't, whatever the decision is to dive deeper, but certainly I'd like to add that to the list.
And that's it on Article Three. Article Four, are we okay? Everybody else?
You good, Tom?
Yep. Article Four, I'm ready to go, too.
Article Four, 159. Just point out that this simply has reference back to Article Two, where the election takes place. The election procedures used to be right here in this section. We moved the election procedures all to Article Two, where all the election procedures are. And sub-paragraph B simply refers you back there. If anybody's interested and wants to look to see how the three of you get elected, that's where they look.
Okay.
All right.
This is one example where referencing the earlier conversation with Attorney Baldwin about pulling them as Boards of Select Persons versus first select person, and singling it out versus, you know, in the current Charter, it's executive branch, again.
The reason that I recommended that is the statutes require only two things in a Charter, and that would not defy the principle, but I want you to understand why I recommended splitting them out in certain cases. You have a legislative body, which is your RTM, and you have the first select person, who the chief executive. The Board of Select Persons plays an executive role, but they are not the chief executive official of the municipality. And in that sense, I thought there were places where the first select person should be separated out. But if there's a list where you want to put them back together, from a legal perspective, it doesn't make any difference. I want to explain why I made that stylistic change.
In my opinion, it, it belongs separated out here, but not in other iterations in the document where they're separated out, and we'll come across that.
If you point those out, that'd be great. All right. No other mistakes in four, no other issues that we discovered in 4.2. In 4.2B1, this is the contract provision, I know this is on the list, this is, this is the section that talks about $100,000 contracts that are exempt from competitive process. A lot of the public testimony the other day simply referred to $100,000 contracts. This is a very small group of contracts that are pulled out of the competitive process. The Board of Education attorneys complained that this would encroach on the Board of Ed. You know, one of the answers would be let the Board of Ed make the decision, but I think Attorney Baldwin and I indicated that we thought this was an area that the Board of Select would be happy to look at, so that it does not encroach on the Board of Ed.
Yeah, it's my specific recommendation that the reference to the Board of Ed be taken out.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I think, and I think that's consistent with what the attorneys and you all spoke of. I think the dollar value of $100,000, I would lower it to $50,000 as well.
Got you. You did bring that up the other day.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. What else do I catch here? I'm just looking at it quickly, just to see if there's any significant, I'm now in 4.3B. Let me explain that, because unless Selectwoman Lefkowitz got answers from Attorney Baldwin the other day, I want to talk about the, what looked like additional authorities for the, for the first select person that are on this list.
I do have a couple of questions before that.
All right.
Something was removed under Advisory Committee Task Forces or similar, the phrase of, or the town was removed, for C, for C? Such advisories that which are concern of the Board or the town, and or the town was removed? And I just think, either I'd like to better understand that.
You know what it does, when you look at the red line, it was, one of the crazy red lines is here, it's on any town matters which are concerned to the Board, it's matters of the Board of Selectmen.
So it's just a.
Yeah. So the word town matters shows up earlier in the sentence, and the word town was deleted, so that is now back in.
And then, in the next one, I think it was removed, the word agency, and I'm sorry, I'm not looking at both copies, and I just made a quick note.
Agency is now a term that's defined under the term department.
Okay.
So you're going to see, you're going to see a lot of deletions of Board, Commission, Agency, Authority, all those are now defined in the term department, or Board and Commission is a separate definition.
And I guess I would ask somewhat rhetorically, is it clear enough, or do we need to reference that new where it's defined? I don't, I sort of have an opinion.
It's in the definition section.
That's what I'm saying. Do we need to reference that? That's what I'm saying, do we need to reference that or no?
It's a capitalized term, we can maybe have a statement upfront that all capitalized terms are defined. I mean, so that people understand that if it's capitalized, there's a definition in the document.
I think there is a section that speaks to the significance of capitalization, so I don't think it's necessary.
Let me, let me quickly go through the, did you have any other questions before I get to that?
Yeah, you're right, too.
So in the list of duties of the first select person, the current duties that are laid out are 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are in the current charter. The other provisions that are here, actually, the direct and supervised, which is item 1, actually shows up, part of it, it's new, but part of it is a recodification of 6-2A4 as well. I think the word "supervised" is new in that section. And be responsible for the administration of the affairs of the town in respect to such departments. That was recommended to the commission, although that's actually in 4.2, 4.2A currently. It was recommended, as we were looking at the authority of the chief executive versus the legislative body, we did a lot of review of other definitions of what chief executive, statutory chief executives do in Connecticut, and it was a pretty standard definition of what a first select person or a mayor would do in, in the community. The, actually, I put one in the wrong category, be responsible for the faithful execution, I repeated that one.
Steve, number 5.
Yeah.
It's, there's typos in that. If you look at it, it says prepare and maintain a long-term financial and capital planning that takes into account the next five years.
Capital plan.
It's capital plan, and it's also a financial plan, could be conceived separately from a capital plan? This, this would almost refer to, as it's written, a five-year operating plan and a five-year capital plan. And I don't think that's what the committee meant, so like a clarification.
The annual plan and update, is that what you mean?
No, in number 5, it says prepare and maintain a long-term financial and capital plan.
I think that is what it's intended to address.
So you want this, because they haven't done it before. Now, as a finance guy, I'm okay with it, but that would mean that the first select person is responsible for putting together a five-year financial plan, operating plan, saying this is?
That's in the budget section.
And, and this dovetails with the budget section, which also requires that to be done.
Okay.
And it's the consensus of the administration and those who are involved that that's an efficient way to do it.
I'm, I get it, yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking at. I will just tell you that has not been done before. As a finance guy, I'm, I'm good with it, but I think it's going to be problematic for you to put together a five-year cap, a five-year finance plan for the town. From, from all sorts of perspectives.
So why, why did we do it?
So, so the statute requires all municipalities to have a capital improvement plan, a CIP.
Capital's separate, listen to what I'm saying. This is, what, the way this is currently written or can be construed, is a five-year capital plan and then a five-year operating budget.
Your point is well taken, then, because I think that we do need to look at that again, because the intent here was to comply with the statute for the, for the CIP, and, and not necessarily for something else. Am I, am I right about that, Steve?
Yep. Well, yes and no, you're right about it partially, but we also did, in the budget section, establish these requirements, and it got dovetailed back into, it was a responsibility.
We should make sure that that section also is consistent, so that it serves the purpose that I think was intended.
Right, so that's an issue that would go back, we'll take a look at that.
Thanks.
6 is new, 186, yeah, it's a new provision. It, again, as we were going through this, and I hope the first select person doesn't get upset about this, is that fully inform the Board of Finance and the RTM of the condition of the community on, with, by issuing a quarterly reports of income and expenses to budget items. I assume a lot of these things are being done already, but this was an additional item that was put in to the charter. And item 7 shows up as new, I think, but it's actually recognizes the all, the requirements that the first select person has with regard to appointments, it simply lays out appointment authority. So it looks like it's an additional item, but it's simply giving the public a comprehensive look at the list of things that the first select person does. Item number 8?
Can I just jump back a minute?
Yeah.
Right now, the CFO presents, does the quarterlies with the Board of Finance. Is this new language adding the RTM, so does the CFO have to now present quarterly to the RTM and the Board of Finance?
Well, it's, it refers to quarterly reports, it doesn't refer to a quarterly presentation, so if the quarterly report to the Board of Finance can serve the exact same purpose, you're accomplishing the same thing, so.
But is that what we do now?
You issue quarterly reports.
And this is?
But they actually do the, but that's not the same as the quarterly reports that the CFO does and the comptroller do for the Board of Finance?
Yes, it is, but there's two things, there's the hard copy, and then there's the presentation. They do present a hard copy, which Jim is saying, if that hard copy gets sent to the RTM, it satisfies the requirement. Right now, I'm not sure that it gets sent specifically to the RTM, I don't know the answer to that question.
Again, this was a provision, I know people said we're diminishing the RTM in this process, but we actually are trying to recognize the RTM as a legislative body. And this was a provision that was drafted during that period of time when we were making the changes.
To that end, can I ask, jump in, with 3, does it work conversely, something that I had asked?
Where are you?
In the powers and the duties, so make periodic reports, can, can it work? And it's just a question, does it, is there a provision in the RTM duties that allows for the opposite?
The opposite being that they provide reports to the first select person?
Does it, can they either ask it, or do they, is there a language that?
Well, they're a legislative body, so they're the ones asking the questions of the executive as a rule.
Right.
So they're not providing legislative bodies, or discretion-based bodies don't make, are not managing anything, but they get to raise questions during the process, they don't report to the executive. The executive reports to the legislative body as a rule.
Right, but?
So there's no equivalent provision, they have oversight ultimately.
But, but that's, that's to say that they have the full ability to make that request.
But that's what I'm saying, is it codified anywhere here? That's?
No, but it's, it's just?
It's codified here, it's, she has an obligation to report, there, we could do a parallel that they will receive reports, I mean, you know, I'm not sure how I'd write it.
Yeah, I don't think it's?
It's unnecessary.
It's covered.
Basically, because we?
I think it's covered.
Yeah, I think the standard's pretty clear, but if you don't?
No, it's fine, I'm asking, just asking the question doesn't necessarily mean I'm looking for a, I didn't perhaps understand, so.
Okay.
Clarifying.
Two other new provisions in there are 8, and I'm assuming that the chief executive does this, investigate the availability of state and federal funds and grants on behalf of the town, and advise the town departments with regard to those funds and grants, and periodically report to the Board of Finance and the RTM on the availability of federal and state funding that may be available.
So I, I think that currently, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the CFO provides a report to the Board of Finance, a report, but typically, I think what happens is that when we have projects, we'll say we applied for a grant, we got this much, part of it is a grant, part of it is. So I just want to be clear here, I don't want to make much extra work for the finance department and CFO to have to actually go and present, or in our new part-time?
The section 8 that he's referring to doesn't have any, any reporting?
There's no reporting requirement.
No reporting requirements.
Okay, just one?
Periodically.
Well, wait a minute, it says?
Periodically report.
It says advise, doesn't that, doesn't that create a thought of a report?
Investigate?
Well, it does talk about a periodic report.
The state and federal grants on behalf of the town, and advise any of the town departments.
Yeah, and it says report. Here's how, here's how it currently works, if I might, from, and this, I think, is, goes to Brenda's point. They don't report presently on, there's 50,000 grants available, we applied for 12, we got 10. This is the amount of money. What they do is they say, we applied for a grant, we got a grant, in order to accept the grant, we need to do X, Y, Z, and then the town bodies approve X, Y, Z.
Right.
So really, what the question here is, what's the intent of this provision? Is the intent of the new provision say, you know, you want the town to report out that there's, and I used a bad example, but there's 50 grants available, there's 20 grants that we got, and there's 10 grants that were executed. Now, the other thing that's been problematic that we've, and it goes back long administrations, well before Brenda's, is that the tracking of the grants, that's always been a pain in the neck, once we get the grants, who's tracking it? It's, it's always been a point of some consternation within the finance office because they haven't had an accountant with the availability to do that work. To say, here's the grant we applied for, these are the funds we got, these are the funds we expended, here's where the grant is, close out the project. So this is unclear to Brenda's point.
Yeah, this is not that detail, this is more stating that this is one of the things chief executives do, and we might be able to clean up some of the language in there.
I just think you're, I, I'm not, again, once again, the intent versus what they're going to be able to comply with just from a realistic staffing point of view.
Right, I mean, currently, we don't do that, Attorney Mednick, we don't stand before a bodies and say, we have, we researched all these grants, we, I mean, we just don't do that.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that this quite raises to the level of a state of the city kind of, you know.
Make sure that we?
I, I think it's trying to capture what the current practice is.
Exactly.
There's no intent to deviate from that current practice.
Yeah, we're not trying to expand it, but again, it was just a?
Same language we had currently, or?
No, no, this is?
Brand new.
Where'd you get this?
A number of different charters from around the state.
Are you making more work in my finance department?
Well, I? Well, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that, you send that back to the commission, I'm sure the commission will take a very careful look at that.
All right.
The?
They're sitting right there, so I know they're?
The ninth one, the ninth one is not making more work for you, I can say without fear of contradiction. This simply articulates your role as the bargaining agent for the town under statute. And I think it's an important thing to put in a charter, because I've run into problems where I've had to explain why a collective bargaining agreement impacts language in a charter, because it trumps the language, so it really lays out that you are? So those are, we stumble into a number, number of areas that the first select person would like us to take a look at in this area, and we'll, I'm sure the commission will look at those as well.
So I have four circles here, 9, you just answered, it's really just codifying state statute. 11, upon the request, I wanted to understand the intent of that, and sort of a real-world example to better understand it. In 12, having the ability to delegate such authority, we had a good discussion around this, specific to the example of the appointment of the WPCA. How does it, should there be a clarifying sentence if the first select person has the ability to appoint somebody, but what happens, there's no protection to say, well, I don't want to take that on?
No, which one is this?
Sorry, for 12. So there was some discussion around that, and then just a small formatting thing, the final role and responsibility, power and duty, 14, it's just formatted differently, so I was just wondering if that was on purpose?
It was just on purpose, that was on purpose, but that's current language, so I'm not?
Yeah, I just think it, perhaps it's worth talking about in terms of a clarifying sentence, because what happens, I, in a real-world example, I was elected and then appointed to the WPCA. Is there sort of language that says, I don't have to take it on?
Can I share my answer that I gave you, Nancy? And that is that the buck stops with the CEO of the town, who was the first select person, and if that person wishes to delegate some authority, for example, who will be on the WPCA among the three board members, and one of those board members does not want to do it, presumably, they have free will and would not have to go to those meetings, and therefore, the, the purpose of having a member of the board of selectmen on the WPCA would be defeated and not accomplished, and that would be a poor reflection, I think, on the CEO as much as it is upon anyone else, to try to force somebody to do something they simply don't want to do.
And I was clear, I love those guys, so it wasn't personal. I love the WPCA, I just meant, is there for future roles for people, future people sitting in these positions? Does it protect, because if it's per charter, yes, the buck stops with the first select person, but is there protective language that would help, or, because someone doesn't want to necessarily defy the charter? Again, it was a discussion, something to think about.
Where does this even come from, I'm curious?
It's in the current charter.
No, I know, does anybody know why it's there? Why did, why are some like mandatory positions for?
There are lots of examples where you can authorize someone to sign a contract, for example, that's been approved by the board.
No, I mean, like, having to have a board of select person on, say, just the WPCA, was that a random thing, or where did that come?
I think it's, I create, it's been with the WPCA like that for a long time. And I'd, I'd have to check the statutes to see if it's required, I?
It just seems like a random board choose.
And it, it goes to perhaps not letting perfect or good get in the way, whatever that phrase is, perfect?
Perfect getting in the way.
Brian, your grandmother saying is going to be like the?
All of that, like of 2022, we're all going to be using it.
Well, I'm sure Brian's grandmother was lovely, I don't think she coined that.
But her, let's refer, let's refer to her. It just, perhaps something to be looked at at a later time when we look at departments.
And WPCA is appointed by the board of select persons, not by the first select person.
Right, but as one of the?
A member of the board of select persons by charter is supposed to be appointed as a member of the WPCA.
Got it.
Yes, we ganged up on Nancy on that one.
I love these guys, just like I'm required to be on the pension board, and I heard?
You don't like that as much as I like the WPCA?
So, you know, there's a lot of love going around. Don't know where I came from, but there we are.
The next item, we're off the list of the responsibilities of the first select person, is a paragraph that I know is near and dear to some of the critics of the document, the mediation and resolution clause, so I assume that's something the board of selectmen, select persons will look at with a possible eye at sending it back.
Where's that again, where?
That is in section?
C3.
C3, on page 42 of, of the red line.
Got it. So I know Selectman Flynn brought this up during, I think, last meeting, and asking, like, he said he thought it, like, it, it gave the interpretation that the people who you were trying to work with, other boards, that you could mandate them to do something, which obviously, there's no way you could do that.
That was not the intent.
We're living in a democracy, so I don't?
Particularly the RTM, you cannot tell the RTM what to do.
I mean, you can't tell anybody.
No.
I mean, I can't even tell my husband to do things, so let's be clear. So to me, this, all this says, and I have to say, I really don't know where all the consternation came from on this.
It's the word "resolution."
Right, but it doesn't say, shall be responsible for mediation?
Lead resolution.
Resolution, okay, maybe you're right.
Delete resolution.
Delete resolution.
Delete the word "resolution."
Because obviously, I think a chief elected official is going to try to be helpful?
That's all this is, yeah.
To any board who comes to them and say, we're having an issue, we need your help, can you try to help us? I mean, at the end of the day, it may not work out, but I think, yeah, you should take the resolution out.
By the way, resolution requires people to agree, resolutions are usually consensual, not?
Oh, you mean a resolution to be together?
To resolve an issue, yeah, is, you can't resolve an issue by fiat.
I, I, yeah, but I think there was, yeah, there was enough pushback on possible overinterpretations, so.
Okay.
All right.
Well, then staff, I don't know if there are any issues on the staff thing, which is a new provision. Then we have the town administrator, again? Again, those are all new. There are no, um, anything new in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the town administrator position, a couple of things. I, I think we should definitely talk about what the duties are. And this goes back to, to history. I, and I'm not sure it needs to be in the document, but at least I'd want to hear. Yeah, sorry. At least I want to hear from the committee what their thoughts are, right? And, and why this goes back is, many years ago at this point, there was a, a person that held the position that was appointed by the first select person. And basically, all the town bodies walked around going, "Now, what does this person do? What do they do? What are they responsible for?" You never heard from the person, never appeared before. The town bodies never gave an update. So, there was a lot of consternation over what the person did, right? And it's not specific to the person, but it was to the position. And I think that's what I'd like to try to avoid with this position. I, I support it. I think it's necessary. But it's really, how do we get to make sure that this isn't just an overtly political position and that they work on the business of the town on behalf of the townspeople? That's what I'm trying to get to.
May I add?
Sure.
And I would add that the appointment of this, some concern was brought up that it was a first select person solely, as, an appointment solely of the first select person rather than the body.
And, Nancy, you're right. And, and what I might consider as regards that is maybe we put some, maybe we ask that something to put in that says that there, there are periodic reports to the Board of Selectmen on the activities. You know, maybe this person is required once in a while to present to the Board of Selectmen of what they're actually, "Hey, this is a project I'm working on. This is what I'm spearheading. This is what I'm doing." And maybe that helps with the whole oversight thing.
If, if I could just jump in, I think the Board of Select Persons already has the authority to do that. So, that's, that's something that you have already.
But I think, I, I don't think we should have to ask for it. I think it should just be something that they're required to do.
So, currently, I would say that, you know, obviously, what I learned when I came in was I had the discretion to relieve any department head from their position within a specific amount of time. So, there is authority under the chief elected official to remove the building official, the tax assessor, the tax collector, the CFO, anybody, for no reason and specifically.
Technically not to renew their term.
Technically not to renew their term. And then, I mean, I've heard stories where chief elected officials will put political whatever in positions, building official positions, or pick something, pick anything. So, I mean, I think, yes, I think there should be, but then I think you would almost have a requirement that every single department head that has that, who answers to the first select person, would then be required to give some sort of, the chief of police, the fire chief, the building official.
It, it's a valid point, and that's why it's got to be more specific as to what their duties are, right? Because when you say, you know, town administrator and chief of staff, right? They, they, to me, represent kind of a, a super authority that helps manage the town collectively over a day-to-day basis. Now, that might not be what's intended, right? I don't know what's intended. But if that's intended, you know, I think hearing from them is, is a, a very good thing, periodically, not, you know.
Would it be required of, say, Jennifer's position and the chief of staff's position?
No, but, I don't know the chief of staff because I don't know who's reporting to who in that regards, right? I think, I mean, we have heard from Jackie on certain projects that she's managed. We once in a while hear from Tom on certain projects that they manage. I think that, by definition, because these people tend to come in, these positions tend to come in with the first select person, there should be a little bit of interaction with the Board of Select People, in, in my opinion. And yes, you're right, we can ask for it, but I think it should be more kind of codified that it should come before us. That's my opinion, depending on the duties of those people, which is why I asked the first question. But, by the way, I also think that the first select person should be able to pick who the town administrator is. I do not believe that that, and I have very realistic reasons as to why that is, you know, on a day-to-day basis. Go ahead, Nancy.
If I may, and I think this may be one of those areas where philosophically, we're going to disagree.
Sure.
Because one of the concerns, you know, I had stated early on when I met with the CRC was, how do you take some of the capital letter dirty politics out of politics? And I see this as one area that periodic reports won't necessarily take care of. And for me, it, it would make sense that this is an area where we could call on the full body, perhaps with confirmation also, and I'm making this up, but perhaps with confirmation additionally with the, the RTM. Again, just thinking about ways in which we can take some of the politicization out of some of these roles. And again, it may be philosophical difference. And in terms of asking for an update, Attorney Baldwin and I talked about some things that just fall under the, like, elections have consequences. And because the minority member of the Board of Selectmen, there are times when a minority position won't, isn't, I'm just trying to think about how to articulate this. You can ask for something to be put on an agenda as a member of this body, but ultimately, it is the chief administrator's job and within their powers and purview to decide what gets on and what doesn't. And that's fair and reasonable. But just to, to say that that's the case unless there's other backup doesn't satisfy the ability to sort of take the politics out of it by just having a periodic presentation.
Yeah. Can I, I do, since we're on this, I think, if I can beg your indulgence for a second, first select woman. The, what I do for a living, and I guarantee there's a point here, so don't, so follow me for a second. What I do for a living is go into corporations and take on interim senior-level positions, chief operating officer, chief financial officer, for an undefined period of time. And largely because that corporation is having some problem or could be a high-class problem, too much growth, could be a low-class problem, having revenue difficulties, okay? When I am successful in those positions and when the company gets their money's worth, it's when the chief executive officer hires me, trusts me, knows I'm working with them, as opposed to the board of directors. When the board of directors says, "We want you to go in and work with the CEO," it never works out as well because you're not trusted, you're shunted to the side, and you're given marginal tasks. In my opinion, the ability, well, it's good on theory and it's good on paper, just say, "Let the Board of Selectmen do this," right? It doesn't work in actuality because if they don't get to pick their person, they may or may not have them in the room when those key decisions are made. So, I just look at it from my own experience, and I look at it from just really what's going to happen in the real world versus philosophically where, you know, it's all kumbaya. That said, I do think having that periodic report out at least gives the general public and the elected bodies the, the oversight to know that they're working on something of value for the town. And they're not just working on a, a political campaign or whatever, for lack of a better word, out of the first select person's inner circle and paid for by taxpayer funds, which is really what you don't want, right? And that's why I say that periodic, we're going to know that that person is helping manage the fill piles, helping manage the contract, just looking at some of the purchasing policies across town. And to me, that's more important than getting to decide on who that person is because I want that elected official to have somebody that they can trust and somebody that they want to work with. That's my own personal viewpoint.
I would agree. I would just, if I could indulge the charter commission for a moment. I know you were talking about the model, model charter.
Yes.
Can you speak a little bit about what you learned?
Sure.
During that process? Anyone who would like to?
Yeah. Thank you, Pam Iakono. To, to start, one of the things that I would encourage you to go back when you, as you're looking at all of this, and I haven't mentioned this to my fellow commission members because it was really something I just dug into when I was doing research, is starting just at the very top with the title. I think you should return to the chief administrative officer title. The reason being, that is what is referenced in state statute, and that is what is referenced all throughout the Model City Charter. So, chief administrative officer, CAO. So, nationally, that's the term being used right now. So, my, that's just me. That's not coming from the commission is, that would be my recommendation for you to reexamine that. The other thing, too, is that we deliberately left this job description and such in a way that it could be written by the director of human resources so that it could be classified to fulfill the job responsibilities of all the best practices and standards throughout the nation. And we didn't want it to be so specific in here that you were pigeonholing yourselves into having to have a, a certain specific skill set in the charter in the event that you needed to pivot from something else. And we spent a great deal of time on this section. There was a lot of back and forth, a lot of, a lot of really heavy discussion on it. Commissioner Brogan did a great job going through and, and working on some language. Same with Commissioner Winn. So, that, that, this end result of what you have right here is, is a lengthy, lengthy discussion on how to handle this. We also had concerns, and, and I hope I'm not speaking out of term, Commissioner Matola and I kind of shared the same concern regarding the appointment. And a little bit to Selectman Flynn's point about bringing somebody in. A, you want that chief executive officer to be comfortable with the people that they are working on a team as, team with. And, and honestly, a little bit of the labor market played into it as well. It being such a tight labor market right now, you don't want to do anything to preclude yourself from getting the best candidates possible. And knowing that you need to have an additional layer of hiring authority can be a turnoff from getting really good candidates, knowing if they have to go through a board to get a job, as opposed to just one particular person. And then, finally, as I mentioned earlier, the CAO position through the Model Charter research, eleven percent of mayors appoint their own person. So, it's, it's not unheard of, and we don't have a mayor council system here. So, I, I think that there's evidence to support everything that we put in here in terms of the first select person being able to hire their own person, the way the job description is in here. You know, again, the only thing, again, for me, is just that you rethink that title.
Thank you. I would just, thank you, Attorney. I, I mean, obviously, this is a new position for most of our community. I, you know, I've been, you know, I said this two and a half years ago, almost three. You know, I've run a company with my husband for over thirty years. I know how to run and manage things. And when I got here, I was very, it was very obvious to me, we didn't have enough people. We didn't have enough eyes on things. There's too much going on in this town. Obviously, I walked into a bit of a, of a mess with the fill pile and all, but aside from that, which, by the way, our CAO is pretty much taking a ball's time, and other things. But I knew, I just knew, as someone who managed a business for so long, that there was just not enough staff to manage the size of a town and, and do it the right way. And I, you know, boldly went two weeks in to the Board of Finance and asked for the money to hire a CAO. We did our homework. We did our homework and showed the Board of Finance very clearly that other towns had this position. This wasn't some, you know, pulling out of the sky idea and that we, if we want, if our community wanted our town to be managed in a transparent and honest and productive way, where we are doing all the work of the town and also being able to respond to the community, a very engaged and active community, we needed more people. And frankly, I felt like, you know, listen, I think elections have consequences at the end of the day. I think if a chief elected official chooses to choose people who are not good and don't show up and give a hundred and ten percent every day, there'll be a consequence for that. And that, you know, that chief elected official will potentially lose their job, and so will all the people around them, the chief of staff, the CAO. So, I mean, listen, to me, it's benef, it's, it's, it's in the best interest of the chief elected official to choose qualified people who work hard, or everybody will be out because the public will say, "You're doing a lousy job. Get out and vote you out." So, I like the flexibility. I like, I agree with you with the CAO. That's the research we did when we asked for the position. I think different qualifications may change over a period of time. Obviously, I was lucky to get Mr. Bremer, who has a, who was attorney, to take the position. And if it wasn't, as, as Selectman Flynn said, if it wasn't someone I got to choose, you know, he's right. I mean, if it was somebody other people chose, that's not going to be helpful because if I, if the, not just me, whoever's in this job down the line, they have to trust the people that they work with, that their confidence is trusted and that they trust them to do a good job. So, I, I personally think that it's, it's the right way to do it this way. And I, I mean, listen, I don't think there's any problem about reporting Tom to the Board of Selectmen. I think the proof is in the pudding. I think, you know, the fact, I mean, listen, no one person can be at every DEP meeting, every FEMA meeting, sitting with Gerald, going over thousands of purchasing things, dealing with the town, doing the budget process, doing the RTM, do, do it, dealing with all the boards and commissions, who, three hundred people, by the way, our town, who want to, you know, talk about bike and pet issues or conservation issues or with the first select person, there's a lot. And then, there's the whole, you know, cut my ribbon and, you know, present something to an Eagle Scout. There's a lot of activity that happens in our community. So, I think leaving it a bit broader, you know, listen, having, if, if things aren't getting done, but, but if they are, they are. Now, yes, am I the face of it? So, yes, does Tom sit in most of those meetings with the environmental attorneys and all of that? Yes, he does. Does he come and, and report to me and give me all the information and then I make the decision about where we're going? Yes. So, is it me presenting to you and Nancy and, and some future first select person is presenting to a Board of Selectmen about the work of their staff, right? They, they're the ones who make the ultimate decision, but it's the first select person who basically is presenting it about what happened and so forth. So, I don't know. I, I mean, I think it could work either way.
Can I ask a question, a follow-up question?
Yeah.
This is a, a great example where I'm listening and hearing and want to take some time because you, you've both raised some really interesting points for me, and, and I like what you just had to say about appointing the people. And is there historic precedent for, in, in your research, either of your research, where there's a clarifying sentence that the appointment is the authority of the first select person, but the reporting in, like, is there language that exists where the reporting in goes to the full body? Like, where there is something codifying that?
I, I, I can take a look at that. Whoops. I can take a look at that. It's generally, the, there's a chain of command issue with these types of positions. And the, and it's kind of the, the first select woman was really describing it, the difference between government, governance and administration. The chief elected official, the chief executive officer of the community has both administrative responsibility and governance responsibilities. And the concept of the CAO, the town administrator, the COO, whatever you choose to call it, is to make sure somebody is spending full time, in addition to the overtime that any chief executive, any mayor, any first select person is spending on the job, that you have somebody who's focusing solely on the administration and not worried about the governance. Other people may call it politics, but politics is part of it, the ribbon cutting and all the stuff that you were describing. So, it generally is somebody that's accountable to it. There are places where it is approved. I, I want to just point out for the record where it is approved by the other body or by the rest of the select people. I think Darian does it that way, but other places, it's simply a mayoral appointment. And there may be other ways to do it, but generally, the reporting is to the, the first select person. But you're an executive board.
Yep.
And most executive officers, most executive officials, department heads, could be called before. heads could be called before you. You have subpoena authority, remember? And, which is never exercised, but you do have authority over all the departments. So there's nothing to say that that person cannot come before you.
I'm just thinking about ways in which my initial response or my initial reflection on this position, having it, if, if I were to change positions on that, I, I'm just trying to think of ways.
So you're only going to codify reporting, reporting obligation?
Yeah, just because if I'm thinking it, other people are, and I just want to have language that helps if that's something that where I land, so it'd be good to have that.
I mean, I think, I, if you could look into it, when we did our research, it wasn't based on that, obviously. It was more, what are other towns doing our size? What are their staffs in their front offices? And how do they manage it, right? So, I mean, it just re... you know, I knew it, that, I was here a week and I knew it. You know, I just, it was like, how, how are we going to manage a town this size, especially with a public corruption scandal and solid, you know, and hazardous waste spread across the town? Me and Jackie, I mean, it, how are we going to do it? And then develop a budget and present a budget and, you know, well, by the way, the CAO isn't going to be sitting on the phone, listen to Mrs. Smith complain that she wants to just tell me something. That's me. So, so while I'm talking to the Mrs. Smiths and the Mr. Smiths, you know, the CAO is sitting with the purchasing director, signing off. Now, listen, you know, when there's big items and important stuff, but he does his due diligence, I trust that he's going to do it, that, you know, that we are following all the rules that we're supposed to be following. And so I think, you know, obviously, there's a level of accountability there. But if there's some kind of, if there's something you could find that obviously isn't detrimental, and this isn't, again, you know, we're all looking at, I think, I think even the RTM is, the Board of Finance and every single body is sort of looking at this in their own lens. They're not looking at who's going to come here next. I am, actually, because this job is extraordinarily demanding. As you said, it's a 24-hour, seven-a-day, week job. And qualified people are not going to be jumping to do this without the proper help. They're just not.
Yep.
So I'm looking at the future of our town. How is it going to work? What kind of people are we going to attract, not just for first select person, but Board of Finance people, RTM people, you know, all of that? So that's really what my sort of, I can't even think of the word, my interest in wanting to do the charter, obviously, it was a long time because we haven't done it in a long time, but to, to make it more, to make it more attractive and more efficient, more transparent, more productive and more honest, frankly, and to be able to attract more qualified, capable people for all our elected boards.
Two, two other things than, than I think might be able to move on to the next article, and that is, Selectman Flynn made a point that was a point well taken. It's not just the private sector. I had a panel discussion, I think it was for Hamden, I think many of the, some of our commissioners actually tuned in to that because we were dealing with, simultaneously with the same issue. And I brought in COOs who had served, and the big issue was the issue of how much detail do you put in the charter? And both of them were of the view that, not so much. Why don't you focus on qualifications? And that's what we tried to do here. We tried to make sure that the Human Resources Director has to write a qualification sheet that will effectively meet national standards and accepted standards, best practices for this type of thing, and leave it up to, in real time, for a first select person to decide what those priorities are going to be for the CAO or the COO or the town administrator. And it varies, again, from town to town. On, on that, and the second point that I think was really, really important, and I had to change my mindset on it. I have viewed these positions as being quasi-town manager positions, where the first select person would make the appointment, but it would be for a term. And I had constructed it in a couple of my towns, so the term would actually exceed the term of the chief executive officer to try to create a management culture that goes from administration to administration. These two people who testified said, no, 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 no. If the chief administrator, if the person in the chain of command who is reporting to the first select person doesn't have the confidence of that person, they shouldn't be doing the job, and none of us would want to hold the job. And that made me think very differently about it, and I think this commission took that view, that it would be a co-termitor, serve at the pleasure of position. So I wanted to give you some explanation of how they arrived at it, how I was advising them, and how my views evolved from time to time on this particular position that kind of go along with what Select, Selectman Flynn was talking about a few moments ago, the private sector.
Thank you.
You have any more in the part before?
Quickly, yeah, is, does this 4.5 regulations, is this different than the statute earlier in the, just the last of this article?
This is the section of the current charter, but let me point out on the definition of regulation upfront. This would be an example of what the capital R regulation is. I looked back at the ordinance because I was trying to figure out, how did I miss this? It uses a lowercase r regulation that what, to define what an ordinance is. And if you look at a definition of what ordinances are, it's not a capital R regulation that is promulgated by a commission, but it's regulatory functions within a community. So the town attorney and I will talk about that, but that's what these are, are the capital R.
It was a little confusing, but you're, I mean, I hear what you're saying.
But it's currently there, and, and, and all this says is that this is how you do it. This is how you adopt it. It doesn't tell you that it's a regulation, these are how regulations are adopted. So the definition should be laid out clearly. This tells you how the regulations are approved.
And this, just the last 4.6 just refers to, I want to, just for the record, make sure that we're going to talk about at a later date, the vacancy of the office and how that pans in.
That's already on the list.
Yep, perfect.
Okay, good.
Okay.
So go, go to Article 5. I don't think there's, hopefully, there's not a lot in here. This is the town clerk. There were no changes in the town clerk. We did make a, one change substantive, although I, I guess we didn't talk about it, it wasn't, it didn't make the PowerPoint. And that is the town treasurer, the money is deposited with the CFO, not with the town treasurer. So that request, that change was made. That shows up here.
Sorry, where are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is 5.1B3.
It says, powers and duties.
The change, but the change is from, just because I don't have any...
Town treasurer to the CFO.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. The other change is that 7, 5.2 is now called just JP's, Justice of Peace, because they're no longer elected, we're proposing that there will no longer be elected constables, so it's only those people that are on that list.
Can, can we look at that, because, just because of, based on public comment, I think it deserves further exploration?
Article 5, constables. No other substantive changes. I'm looking through here. You'll note in 5.5 that, I kept a couple of examples in here. When I was doing the red line, I had to make a judgment call. If you take a look at Section 5.5 under C, you'll see assessment system is repealed. In some cases, I left them if they were gone completely from the document. In other cases, where they were moved to another section, we review them as a red line and not as a, as a strike. So we, we eliminated the assessment system language, and we've proposed eliminating the assessment system language in the current charter as a Board of Finance responsibility because as a matter of reality, statute, practice, they don't really do this. So that's the reason that has been eliminated. Which, I'm sorry, which? This is in 5.5C. You'll see in the red line, you'll see a strike through.
Here.
An assessment system.
Yeah. I'm, I'm very familiar with this one.
We've gone over it many times.
Yeah. Then, what else?
Do you want to take like a five-minute break? You have some water. There's cups there if anybody wants a, do you want a water?
Um, you may step away. Are we going indefinitely or is there a...
We're going all night, Nancy.
What's the plan here?
Um, how's a six o'clock adjournment sound to you?
Yeah, we're making good progress here.
Sounds good.
Get some dinner.
Can I just get a glass of water? I'll be right back.
Please, go right ahead.
Can we take a two-minute break?
Take a couple-minute break, oh. Bathroom, water, I put some cups there, so.
Motion to break.
We're good. Can we just, we're, can we just take a break?
We're still here, so you want to mute that?
Good job, I like. No offense.
Adam?
Okay, I'm, we didn't officially break, we just informally broke. And we're back, we're back on. Okay, let's, let's see what we might be able to get done here.
Right.
All right, Attorney Mednick?
We're in Article 5 for everybody's edification. What you'll notice is that we, where, where, where boards were staggered, we simply point out that they're staggered. The only substantive change we made in town plan and zoning commission is we changed the name of the master plan. I don't think we talked about this in the presentation, to the Plan of Conservation and Development. I think we've determined that there is no master plan, and the charter should simply reflect the statutory responsibilities that we have in town for the Plan of Conservation and Development. Those are the only changes, and we didn't find any, anything missing in this section. So I don't know if you have any questions on Article 5, besides the constables?
Anyone? Just to, in the old, sorry, if I'm going back to something that you did clarify, it was you changed the, the powers, so all money required to be collected by the town clerk is transferred from the treasurer now to the CFO?
Correct.
Is there other mention, sorry for not, of the treasurer here in the...
We will get to the treasurer, we will get to the treasurer.
Okay, so I'll, I'll save my question.
Okay.
Mr. Mednick, before you go on and forgive me, I should address this before the break. The provision being taken out under the Board of Finance relative to the assessment system, can you just explain why that provision is no longer relevant?
One, I think it's statutory and there, there is technology. I think that Jim looked into this issue a little bit as well, but it was just not something that they do, according to John Matola, at this, at this point, and, you know, something that's an administrative function, in essence.
No, that's not exactly true. Jim Baldwin, would you talk to it a little bit, please?
Sure. The language is a holdover language that existed in charter versions prior to statutes which were passed, which kind of take, take over and control and much more clearly define the, the role and purpose of the tax assessor's office and what they can do and what they can't do, especially including the tax assessment system and systems that are put into place. It's all guided by statute, and that language is archaic and inapplicable to today's situation.
Thank you.
So Article 6, in Section 6.1, you'll see that we have constable, has to be a resident of the town to be appointed to be a constable. We changed the standard, we, well, we eliminated assistant town attorney from the standard, again, Article 6, 6.1, from the residence standard, and we modified the current residency standard for chief of police and fire chief to residency within the state of Connecticut. That is a substantive change, which I think we talked about briefly.
Go ahead.
I'm willing to...
Yeah, I just want to talk about the elector requirements and thinking about, I think the town attorney, I'd like to discuss that as a...
You want to eliminate the...
Eliminate as an elector. You know, at least have the discussion around it, the pros and the cons.
Okay.
Something that we should talk about.
B and C, there are no changes. The changes you see are simply edits of newly defined terms. 6.2...
Also, sorry, catching up, and I appreciate that the chief of police and the fire chief living in town, why that is not a requirement. The state of Connecticut, I just would like to hear a little bit more about that versus like a 25-mile radius versus a 50-mile radius, and we talked about it a little bit, but...
I'll be happy, I mean, we, the commission went through the discussion and the, the request was broad. I think that they just made a judgment call that Connecticut is a relatively small state, 25-mile radius, and I'm not sure that takes you into New York from here, but close, if not actually in, in, into Westchester. So you could, you could adopt a standard, a standard within the state of Connecticut within a timeframe. I don't think there was a ideological impediment to going in that direction. I think they just, and in terms of just trying to figure out what the right mileage was, they agreed that it would be somebody in the state of Connecticut and presumably somebody...
Go ahead, Chris.
I think we also thought that the commission in, in particular hiring could set...
Set their own standard.
Set their own standard. So this, we wanted to keep it broader and then based on what the market was and what they were thinking, they could...
I think there's certain statute, like, there's certain requirements, you know, just like a teacher, where you have to be certified, I, I may be wrong, but you have to be certified in the state of New York, you have to be certified in the state of Connecticut. I'm pretty sure that our law enforcement...
Oh, yeah.
...has certain requirements to be in Connecticut.
They have to be.
John?
That was a major part of the consideration, and if you, if you put a geographic limit in like 25 miles, someone could live across the sound in New York, they could live down in Westchester County, and the laws that they were administering could be different from where they live to the state of Connecticut. Having an elector in the state of Connecticut, they are certified as a law enforcement officer in the state, which eliminated the question of what laws do we all familiar with.
And to, and to, and to Commissioner Brogan's point, the language is pretty clear. It's in accordance, in the state of Connecticut, in accordance with requirements of the respective appointing authority. So the appointing authority can say to a chief, we need you in 25 miles, we need you in 15 miles, we need you in 50 miles, within the state. So, so I think that was the way...
So the need is to be broad enough and yet with a nod to the commission being able to have...
And make it a negotiable item. But it can't be New York, can't be Rhode Island, can't be Massachusetts.
I mean, I'm personally comfortable, I don't know how you both feel, but I think Connecticut makes sense.
Okay. 6.2A and B, again, are new sections. They simply just talk about the general authority the department heads had. This is not adding to the specific authority that you will see as you go through the charter. And the qualifications provision is a provision that I generally recommend to towns and cities to have the Director of Human Resources who develops the job descriptions to make sure that all job qualifications are presented and prepared in accordance with nationally-accepted professional standards and best practices in the applicable field, and that they should be updated every four years, at least every four years, or whenever a vacancy occurs in the position. So those are more standard administrative provisions. Minority representation. We added a clause at the beginning that unless expressly set forth in this charter, the standard is a no more than bare majority of members of boards and commission, that's your current standard. We thought that there's a possibility that there would be a commission that would be created to be in compliance with state standards, which is a lesser standard than your standard, which is a strict minority, a bare majority standard. 5, 6.4, I have a question that I want to get into right now, I want to talk to a town attorney about, I, and I, I may be wrong, I've looked at this section several times. We wanted to make clear in this next section, when, what happens at the end of a term for a department head... for a department head or a board or commission member. And I am not sure whether we're missing, the circle's not closed on this and I want to look at it a little more carefully. But one of the benefits of the red line review this weekend was really pulling this section out so I could take a look at it and I want to talk to the Town Attorney about it. If, if you, if the select men and women do not mind, I would like to do that. B simply makes a change for the, to acknowledge the appointment dates for the golf, the Golf Commission, the Ethics Commission, and the Board of Library Trustees. C, there are no changes in vacancies. We did, in removal from appointed positions for cause, we, um, made no changes. There's some clarification of what an appointing authority is and how that operates. 6.8, I want to point out for the record, is the, is the cousin to the mediate and resolve clause. This is a required cooperation clause. Um, you're going to see it again in the budget section that simply says to everybody, if you're on a border commission, if you're a department head, if you're an elected official, you're the first select person, you're the member of the Board of Assessment Appeals or the Board of Finance or the RTM, you have an obligation to cooperate and to provide information and to make sure that you do nothing to obstruct or stand in the way of, of the operation of the government. We have a compliance provision in here. These require all board and commission members to comply with the provisions of 1.5 through 1.7. Remember, that's the section in the beginning where we were talking about the ethics standards, the civility standards, open meeting and open record standards. It's just a reference back. And, um, we simply have a provision in here, basically, um, in addition to those boards and commissions established by the Charter, the RTM and its own initiative or the recommendation of the first select person by ordinance. And maybe that's a place where it's the Board of Select People. It could be there as well. Yep.
So the, can I ask a question about that? Is that, is that...
That's new.
Yeah, so...
Let me establish judicial boards and commissions.
As an opportunity where that could be inclusive of the body?
Say it again.
Under the creation of boards and commissions, it's new language?
Yeah.
At the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen versus first select person? Or majority of the, you know, I just think it's something we could look at.
Can someone read this to say that the first selectman cannot appoint any boards or commissions?
No. On Section 10, 6.10?
Yeah.
No, this is dealing with the...
Creation of new...
Creation of new boards in addition to those that are in here.
Okay, but what about the, I think we established the diversity commission, right? We established...
At the request, though, of the first select person.
Right, but we did it, the RTM didn't do it.
No, I think it says that the RTM may, on its own or at the recommendation of...
Okay, but does that, that's what I'm asking. Does that mean that you and we cannot with a...
No.
Okay.
That's not the intent. Uh, there's a distinction, though. Uh, when the RTM does it, they're doing it by ordinance. They're creating a body by ordinance, by law. When you're doing it, it is not what I would consider to be a full-fledged border commission. It's more of a task force than, because you're not exercising legislative authority. It's an executive body that advises the executive. It may have import to the entire community and reporting on things that would affect the entire community, but the, but when I'm talking, this section is talking about a, in effect, a legally-based, ordinance-based...
Order of commission.
Which the RTM has the authority to complete.
So even if...
To establish. It does not take anything away from the Board of Selectmen.
But even if we recommended it by this, for this particular thing, it would have to go before the RTM?
And if they reject, if they didn't vote in favor of it, it... It doesn't happen. And then the Board of Select Persons can establish...
A task force.
A task force, an entity, but it would not be a board or a commission.
I was just going to say that the Board of Select Persons already has the ability to create these advisory committees, task force, which are not permanent. This is, this is the other side of that coin. It's, it's a more...
It's a board and a more permanent body.
Correct.
Exactly. It's a permanent body.
It's a permanent body. More permanent body. Legislation could always be taken away, of course. Everybody okay with Article Six? Move to Article Seven. And I assume that in Article Seven, we're going to have a list question?
Yep.
All right.
Again, in this section, I'm going to look through it and, um, uh, this is, the Town Attorney is here. The issue of, um, the Town Attorney's residency was already raised. It's not in this section anyhow, I don't believe.
Treasurer?
We'll get there.
Yep.
Assistant Town Attorneys, nothing changed. I'm just flipping down here to make sure. Town Treasurer, we, um, didn't change at all. But do you have a question?
Yeah. Is any of this new? Language, it just was, something came to my head because...
The, the two that are new are the Town Administrator and the Chief of Staff.
Yeah. There's nothing new in the Town Treasurer. There was a lot of discussion about whether the Town Treasurer should remain.
Right, I guess I want to bring up that conversation again. I'm just remembering that, just in light of, um, taking away the duties of collecting the money and bringing in...
Yeah, they had a pretty, I mean, a pretty in-depth conversation at the commission level. Um, I think at the end of the day, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they all, they talked about it a lot and they were like, "You know what? If it's not broke, don't fix it." Wasn't that kind of the...
I think there was a concern that maybe we not think about everything. I guess I was one of the ones, having talked to some of the treasurer's, saying, "You don't need it." But then again, maybe even they didn't fully understand that there are times...
It hasn't come to...
Yeah, they were worried that, I think, yeah, were you worried that if you did it, take it away? That's some kind of ramification.
I don't think most of them acted a lot. Substance sort of is not a lot.
No, they come to the bond meetings, they sign off and we weren't sure if that would have some impact on the bonds, the way we do things, because we didn't have one.
We left it in place for if, in the future, they decide to expand that role, because that can, by statute, have a much expanded role. So we decided just to leave it there. We're not utilizing it in that capacity right now, but it's there so that you can use it in the future.
Yeah, and I do...
And you may be getting confused, Selectman Levkowitz, on some of the stuff we changed, because, for example, all things are done as board trustees with the treasurer and then that piece that we moved out of the town clerk with the town treasurer. All that's doing is codify what the actual practice is. Because the town treasurer is not, wasn't being used in those antiquated ways that was stated in the Charter. So again, this goes back to the whole point of modernizing this thing so that it reflects what, in actuality, is happening.
Chairman Cafarelli?
Yeah, I just wanted to add in here. This is a clear example of where we could not answer the question, "Why?", so we did not remove it. There was absolutely zero answer to the question, "Why remove it?", so we did not remove it.
Could I answer? It does. It's, I mean, you're articulating exactly my recollection. I think there is some conflating of the roles on my part here, but I guess the question, as Chairman Cafarelli just said, couldn't answer the "why" and coming back to that is important. So I, again, it's not one of those make or break things for me. It was just something to think about and talk about at this table, because you couldn't answer the "why".
Uh, if I may, um, I just noticed something. I'm going to talk to Town Attorney Baldwin. No secret, I'll let you know what it is. Uh, in several sections here, and I, I picked it up in one section. I was going to make a recommendation that we take a look at it. You talk about duties being conferred on town treasurers by Chapter 94 of the General Statutes. And I'm looking at a change of the language about conferred. Because the language is, it's not conferred. Those sections tend to be for towns that don't have charters. And so I, I'm coming up with some more precise language, which I'll go over with Town Attorney Baldwin. And for our next meeting, I will have it ready for you.
Okay.
So that we can recommend. I just want to let you know that you shouldn't be surprised by that. In 7.6, there were changes in the direct, at the request of the Public Works Department with regard to the Director of Public Works. And in this case, um, we do talk about requirements set forth in the General Statutes and eliminated the professional engineering requirement for the, um, for the Director of Public Works. To balance that, the commission recommended that we, um, that the Director shall follow human resources policies and procedures to assign a town engineer who will be the technical advisor of the town and all the departments of the town. So I wanted to make sure there was reference to somebody in town having engineering qualifications, but it does not have to be the person who runs the principal infrastructure department in the town. Uh, we also added in this section, um, that the Director will be an ex officio member without vote or have a designee serving on the Flood Prevention, Climate Resilience and Erosion Control Board. And I hope they come up with an acronym for that board. So the, everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to address this again. I know there were some, one, maybe two letters that came in saying, you know, we shouldn't, um, I think the word was dumbed down the position by removing the engineering qualification. And frankly, um, I, I just, you know, that just doesn't make sense. It's really an antiquated section. Managing the DPW Department, one of our largest departments, is, you know, does not require an engineering degree. I mean, frankly, the interim Director, which we have to call him, was the Director of Engineering for Aquarian. But he wasn't an engineer. So, you know, trust me, we had people applying and in management skills, managing large departments, managing the engineering department, managing the DPW supervisors, managing the men, that, that's a different skill set than an engineer. So I, I just want to say that publicly, because obviously I've interviewed people when we had all that trouble with DPW. And, um, the most qualified people were not engineers to manage that department.
It's really mobilization of infrastructure services and...
Project management.
And project management. A lot of towns are moving in the same direction. Um, it's also true, we'll see in a few moments, with health directors, where there used to be a requirement to be a physician, so no longer a requirement. So, um, we have the Charter conformed to that as well as a trend in health, in, in local health services delivery.
Okay.
Uh, there are no other substantive changes. Building official, um, purchasing agent. We did have some changes in the section on the Director of Human and Social Services. I believe these were requested, I don't think the commission made these up. These were requested by the department, where we made a couple of changes in the language that basically their job is coordinate the department and other agencies, private social service organizations and other entities in social service matters as authorized by the General Statutes, including matters which relate to the aged people with disabilities, veterans, youth and underserved populations of the town. I think it was an upgrade on the presentation of what the constituent groups are that are covered by the department. The Director of Parks and Recreation, there was a change in 7.10B4. And there's a typo that I picked up this morning when I was going through it. Um, it's basically submit to the Golf Commission, the Board of Education and Harbor Management, um, the, um... The plans for the development and maintenance of recreational areas, under their control, basically. Um, and, um, there was a run-on between the two sections when I was doing the red, the red line. That needs to be cleaned up, but it's, um, that's what that section, which looks a little messy in the red line, is meant to say. The other changes in this section, tree warden, we increased the term. Again, this was a statutory, it was a request made very, very early on in our process, from the one-year presently to a two-year term, which is consistent with the statutes. And, yep.
Sorry, going back, I'm just trying to catch up with the current versus, I looked, I don't, since it's not redlined, um, since it's not red. Economic Development, is that a, literally a line-by-line re-codification or is there...
What section is that going on?
Sorry, uh, I just went to look, seven...
Community of, yeah, here's, here it is in the red line. There's just a change of, it's a edit.
Sorry, mine's brown.
Select person.
I mean, mine's black and white, so I was just curious.
Yeah, got you. That's the only change, is select person.
Okay.
First select person makes the appointment. It's, it used to be first select men and that's the only change in that section.
Okay.
I mentioned the tree warden. Uh, nothing on the auditors, nothing on the assessor, nothing on the tax collector, except, um, and I'm going to have Attorney Baldwin take a look at this as well. Subsection D, I marked it as an errata. And I don't remember, and I'm looking back, I'm going to go look at my notes, but I wanted to make sure I included it here so that we didn't lose it again as a special exemption language. Um, and I want to make sure that we're not losing this language if there's some significance to the language. And I'll talk to Attorney Baldwin about it to make sure that we either want to keep it or we want to, that we intentionally deleted it. I will look back at my notes to see why that was out of here. And I'm of the belief that it was a red line fatality. You have any?
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, I'm just going to need to spend a little more time going back and forth, just because I'm still on the economic and community development and trying to understand implications of language from the current to the proposed.
What you're going to see here, I'm looking at your copy, um, is you're going to see that it's liaison to the Economic Development Commission, Affordable Housing Committee. Um, when I was doing the, the red lines, as I had to do them, break them up, I took the body of the document to make sure there was no change. I tried to leave the headers in place so that we didn't have a formatting problem, uh, which I thought was going to be a huge issue with the red line in the way that I was going to do it. So that's why you see a header, but there's no change in the body of the language.
Okay. I just want to publicly reserve the right to come back to this after I spend...
7.17 is the constables. We've created, the commission created four constables and we have a transition provision for creating the appointments for the constables.
And again, just something to bring up, as these are now appointed versus elected.
Got you.
And it was the cause of some public comment and therefore I think worthy additional discussion around it.
It's only on the list. We have it from earlier on.
Yep.
But thank you. But thank you.
I just want to point out, Steve, I don't think that in your red line, the changes to the tax collector, there were sections that we deleted, and that might not have been picked up in this latest iteration, or was it? Hold on. I could be wrong. Appointment duties, delinquency, accounting method, and special, something's missing.
Special exemption.
Exemption.
I put it back in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, sorry about that.
Yeah, I put it back in because I wasn't sure about it, is what the problem.
Got it.
That's why it shows up as, when I did the latest red line, it showed up because I left it in, basically. It was just not clear to me that we had intentionally taken that out. So that's the section I just mentioned I want to talk to you about. In 7.18, we made the.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, but there was, there was something about accounting method.
And that is.
We took that out. The accounting method, tax collector shall use a double-entry system. Do you remember that discussion?
Yes, take a look at footnote 288.
Okay.
It's accounted for.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not shown to be stricken in the red line.
Yeah, it didn't show up in the red line. Again, I made a judgment call on some of the, the things, some of, when I did the red line, the red line was bleeding into subsequent paragraphs. So if it was something that was being taken out completely, and it's referenced in the footnotes, I didn't think we needed to show it, is what it came down to.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I took us backwards. I just wanted to get that, that dated, I guess, on the record, so understood.
All right. In section 7.18B, the licensed physician requirement I mentioned a few moments ago is gone. We're recommending that it be eliminated.
Sorry, can you go back to what you just, the comment you just made about making a judgment call in terms of what's changed, what's deleted? Can you just clarify?
There were situations where you'll see in this document where I left some, some sections in that were totally stricken from the document. In others, and I probably could have made the same judgment to leave the language in on the accounting method in the document, took it out because it's referenced in the, in the footnote. Where I moved a section from one section to another, you will not see necessarily the elimination of the section, because in a lot of the red lines, it was just bleeding, and I was going to have to go in and tear out of the section the actual section that was being repealed. Happy to provide you my backup, to indicate that it actually is gone, but I made a judgment call that some of those things, as long as they're referenced, we, they're referenced, you can take a look at the section in the current charter and find out what was deleted in its entirety. So if something was deleted in its entirety, for the most part, you're not going to see the strike through in this document.
I think it would be helpful to see it, just so we know what language is missing.
It's in the charter. It's in the current charter.
It's in the current charter.
I'm saying that where there was an entire section.
It can be done.
We can ultimately do it. If we have to do it, we can ultimately do it. You can also, I'll give you all the backup papers, but it's in the backup paper.
But I think it's important in the sense of, we need to see what was once.
Can I just say, yeah, two things. One, we'll do it, so there's nothing to say.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah. There's nothing else in this section. This article.
Very good.
Do we want to try to do another? It's five of six, or should we?
Well, how much do we have left?
We have three chapters left, so when we come back.
I mean, let's try to go, do, let's do a couple more. Let's see where we are.
So again.
Sorry, based on the six o'clock agreement, I do have to go at six.
Okay, let's, let's try to get through this, though.
Again, the opening sections in 8.1 are, are all the lists, so the list issue, I will reference again. 8.1E, we have a clause that indicates the appointment dates for the ethics and golf commissions, which are going to be on April 1st.
You talked about that.
Yep. 8.2, there are no changes on the conservation commission, no changes on the police commission, 8.3, no, so one second here. Oh, yeah, but you'll see in 8.3B that I'm recommending a slight change in language. This goes to that issue of conferred, what powers are conferred. And I'll talk to the town attorney about that and see what his thoughts are on that. 8.4, no changes to the fire commission. 8.5, no changes. When I say no changes, there are edits. You know, there, there are title changes and things like that, 8.5. 8.7, again, no changes, except for edits. 8.8, same thing. 8.9, same thing. 8.10, I actually included in the title the change of the flood prevention, climate resilience, and erosion control board, and you'll see that the title is changed in the body. You'll see that the public works director or designee is appointed as a non-voting ex officio member of the board. And you'll see a whole new section on alternate members that was requested by the commission. And this section replaces language that I know is redlined in, called temporary members, which is section 10.12.C. If you want to actually look at the language, it's in 10.12.C, which is referenced in footnote number 320. Under WPCA, Water Pollution Control Authority, no real changes here. We do have a change in C1, where we, where we were requested to make the modification, and this came from Public Works, that the responsibility of WPCA is to operate, maintain, and manage, and through the Department of Public Works, plan, layout, et cetera, back into the language. So the opening clause is new language. Historic commission, no changes. 8.13, the human services commission department, again, we made changes here that were equivalent to the updated language of constituencies that are served by the commission that were requested by the commission. So it talks about social service matters, and talks about the groups, people with disabilities, veterans, youth, underserved populations, et cetera, et cetera, and people with disabilities. So those changes were made in that manner. No changes in the golf commission. The ethics commission, we are transitioning the term of office, I believe, on the ethics commission. You'll see that in 8.15A3. And 8.16, you'll see the library commit, the board of library trustees is going from six-year terms to three-year terms, and most of the language in here, delineated language deals with the transition of how you get from here to there. You just can't change it overnight. You have to actually transition, and I believe that the dates in here really lay out the transition. There's some new language in there.
Pete?
Yes.
Sorry, if I may, just bring to everyone's attention that we have had further discussions with the library board about some additional changes that will be brought before the board at its next meeting. It's just more clarification and to be consistent with their current investment policies and use of capital funds, or use of their investments for capital improvements that's been worked out with the board, the CFO, and myself, and then we'll present that and explain it at the next meeting.
Excellent. And that's it? Because the rest of the changes in that section are the library trustees. And then all we have left is the budget, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I want to get the date on the calendar, obviously, so you're not available, Nancy Anderson.
Possibly by WebEx, but I'd have to, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay. So if we can't make it for Thursday, I'd like us to, I'm on the schedule, a meeting on the 12th, so that we can get B in the timeline and have the opportunity to do this, to be able to send this stuff, to give the CRC there enough time and not crunch them. Do you think that might work better for you?
12th I can do.
You could. Perfect. All right, I'll work out the times with you and Tom. All right.
I would just say that, given the response of having a midday meeting, that if we could, if you could consider doing it at the end of the workday, I think that's helpful for people. Just a thought.
Well, there, it's not a public hearing. It's a meeting, a working meeting, and I'm going to try to be more considerate to people who need to be here to participate with, for the meeting. Obviously, people can watch in a WebEx or call in, or they can watch it after the fact as well.
And for the record, I have a six o'clock meeting with one of my other charter times I tie that.
So I mean, I thought this was really productive today. I appreciate you being able to be available earlier. I think, obviously, if we had started late, we'd be here really late, and it cuts into anybody having the opportunity to eat dinner. So, so I think, I think it would be helpful. All right, well, thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.